All right, we call this meeting to order. It's a Ways and Means Committee. This is for your 2025 operating budget discussion meeting, April 30th, 2024. We're at 5:32 PM. See, it's Means being recorded by the Ways and Means Committee and GCTV9. If any other persons present are doing the same, you can also notify this guy at this time. All right, I didn't hear anybody. So we'll move on with the roll call of members. Councillor Toronto, yeah, I'm here. Councillor Garrett?
Here.
Councillor Mastropuro?
Here.
Councillor Wondolowski? Councillor Perry?
Present.
All right. We don't have any approval minutes tonight, so that's easier. We'll move right into public comment. Is there anyone here? We didn't really have a sheet, but is anyone here? Doesn't look like there's public comment. Anyone online, public comment, you can throw your hand up on there or put your name in the chat. One once? One twice? Sold to close the public comment. Public hearing, there are none, motions, none tonight. This is a discussion of our budget. We're going to start with the smaller city departments. None are small, some are just slightly smaller. So I'm just going to rifle through the book in the order that they appear. Sorry for those of you who might be later in the alphabet. But that's the way it works sometimes. My last name starts with a T, so I'm very used to it. Wow, weird, City Councilor. First one up. Welcome.
Page 54.
Just to note, Councillor Wondolowski is now here? Four. All right, I'm assuming you guys have all looked over this and if anyone has any specific questions, feel free to ask.
Page in the book?
51.
That's last. Okay, 51, yes, okay.
If there aren't any specific questions, if Scott would like to give any feedback.
So I don't have anything prepared. The increases in salary or contractual obligations. The expenses are never enough. However, we do with what we've got. And that's really about it.
Quick question. Look, I saw the legal expenses budget was cut, 10,000 to 5,000. I don't know what our legal expenses look like as a city council. Is there a reason that it's down to five? I mean, you were on the council, obviously, so I imagine that you have an understanding of how much we usually spend out of this.
I actually, I do ask that. I actually made that cut. We've had it in for 10,000. Have not used any.
Okay.
By any chance, you need to get a lawyer because you want a different lawyer than the city lawyer. There's something we weren't agreeing with. I think you all know that we have a good enough relationship that we would put more in that that was needed. We had to increase legal and other lines, but this has never been used.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I didn't know what the previous usage was, so that's helpful.
Any else?
I have to ask a question?
Sure.
So under my budgets, there are four. It's council clerk registrars and elections. Do you want to do them all now or bounce?
Okay.
Makes more sense.
And so clerk is on page 74.
I have them grouped together, but
Yeah, they are grouped together. Page 74, that's the clerk's budget.
Does anyone have any questions in advance of this?
You've already answered them.
Basically, salaries, contractual, everything else we do with what we can. And not to rinse and repeat, but the Board of Registars are basically the same. The elections, you'll see it, the elections fluctuate year to year. It depends on how many elections we have, how many poll workers were required to have per election. Next calendar year, we will have two elections. That's why it's slightly less than it was this current year when we had three.
How's it going? Get enough volunteers or anything?
Yeah, we have, we have a, we always need Republican poll workers. That is the shortest list that we have, is the Republican poll workers. The majority of people in Massachusetts are unenrolled, which is formerly called independent. We have a good amount of registered Democrats, but we do need registered Republicans. We reach out to the Democratic and Republican Town Committee every year and ask them for names and suggestions. But we're always in need of Republican poll workers. So if anyone is interested, send us an email and we will do our best to get back to you.
Yeah, I was just noticing the big jump between actual FY23, but that's because that's a off year for elections.
Right, so a local year is often less. I should correct that. A local year that abuts a presidential primary is more than anything else. Because that means three elections. Usually, we only have two. This year currently, 24, is a local election with presidential primary.
Right.
I don't know what page you were on there, so it didn't matter.
But wouldn't that? Wouldn't the fall elections fall into 25s?
Yeah, so yes, the September and November election in this year fall under the FY25 budget. So, but that's still less than FY24 because of the number of poll workers that we need. And we had to budget for a September possible preliminary, which we didn't end up having. The November general election and then the March presidential primaries. That's, so every four years, when we have a presidential primary, that fiscal year budget is higher than normal.
So because theory this year's going by FY24's budget, which was actually higher than this year's proposed would be, I can't remember which ones I was looking at, meaning it's to see the three-quarter marks for things that I know look good overall. That's going to be short of the full
FY24?
FY24, should be sure, if you were just saying we had budgeted for a primary that didn't happen. A local primary.
Local primary that didn't happen. Money left in the salary line. And some other little lines, like printing, there will be some funding left in because we didn't have to print the ballots for September. We didn't have to pay for them, so there's a couple thousand dollars there. There's going to be some poll worker salary that we didn't have to expend and some salaries that we pay for DPW and police. DPW to set up police to staff the election. So there will be some left in this election budget because we didn't have the primaries.
Yep.
I also
Hey, Kirsten, you want to mute yourself?
Not cooler? Uh, no, I don't even want
Actually, but I think I just asked you to unmute it.
Okay.
Yeah, just thank you very much. You're the frontline, you're the staff, you do a lot of work behind these people, all the attention to or care about. But thank you very much for all the stuff you guys do. You're the frontline, you're the face of the city ball, so thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Have a great night, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you done?
Really, that's all, that's all she was here to do. All right, well, I said I was going to move in order, but that's not true because it jumps around.
Next one on the list.
You already went through the mayor's budget, right?
Yep.
Yep. Uh, community and economic development. Howdy, you're welcome.
Hello, thanks for having me.
Anyone have any upfront questions that they had come up with ahead of time? Or do we just want to
Page 58.
Presentation, you have to
For the numbers.
Fine with having you explain and then, and then we can ask questions if that's okay.
Okay, great. Thanks for having me. I thought I'd split my explanation into two parts. You'll notice that our budget for FY25 is almost double what our FY24 budget was, and I'm sure you're wondering why. And that is due to staffing. Ninety-three percent of that increase is because we are fortunate enough to have Ina, the city's grant writer, moving from the mayor's office into our department and shifting into a full-time position. We're thrilled, she's a great fit with our department and think that that position is a critical need for the city. So the vast majority of that increase is for that one FTE position. The remaining small increases is primarily the 3% standard increase for our staff and a slight salary increase for our community and economic development assistant, who's Christian's on the call. If you've worked with Christian at all, you know he does just about anything and everything non-CDPG that comes into our department. And we just wanted to make sure as things, it feels like on a daily basis, get added to his plate that his salary reflects all of those additional increases. So we adjusted his salary a bit. Everything else has remained relatively status quo. And some of our contract services have in fact dropped a bit. The other thing that I would just flag for you is I have left the director position in this budget funded 60% from the city, 40% from the CDPG. You may remember in prior years, in fact, it's a topic that comes up, I think, annually. The dream is that this position would be 100% funded by the city. The reason being that the director has to split their time when it's partially funded by CDPG and prioritize CDPG-related projects for that 40%, city-related for the 60%. That for me means that I'm a little bit hampered in the amount of time I can spend on economic development. I don't have total liberty to divide my time freely. It also means that I'm precluded from working on cannabis projects because my position, the director position, is partially funded with HUD dollars. And cannabis is certainly an economic driver of a sort in our, in our city. And so I direct all of those to Eric, who is more than capable and able and handles them wonderfully. But it would be great if our department down the road could participate in those conversations. Happy to answer any questions you might have about any of that or specific.
That might be changing federally very soon. Always.
But in the meantime.
In, in the mayor's budget versus the department, there's a $10,000 expenses less. Where is that coming out of?
So we have shifted, those are some expenses that I think we are treating as more one-time expenses coming out of ARPA money. They were some marketing dollars. We just tried to cut where we could and keep our budget as least as we could. So they may reappear down the road for this budget cycle where we are.
So this is the line item purchase of service I saw all throughout the entire budget. And you will be the first person I ask because I had no idea, you know, what does that mean specifically? Like, that's a kind of a, just from a non-budget writing perspective. I'm not clear on what that means exactly, because it could mean a lot of different
You are asking the newbie who's been on Contract services, so it's a catch-all for things that are non-salary. It's, for us, it's rent, it's fees for the kiosk, it's website maintenance.
That's what's
Marketing dollars.
That's super helpful, so thank you. Yeah, I was driving me nuts. I wrote a question mark like never page.
Oh, it's easy.
All right. Thank you so much.
I miss people that say like, in the way to man. Let me know that, that'd be great.
Yep.
All right, we'll go right into assessors. So I see Kelly's up there.
Randy's online.
Oh, Randy's up there, that's who I was looking for.
Randy's here.
Randy's here. All right, Randy, you're on the, you're on the hook now. Anything you'd like to, to say to the committee before they might or may not riddle you with questions?
Not really any questions, or it's more, I'm interested to see if you have any questions about our budget. I guess I could explain what we have in there or the different changes that we have. If, if that's what you're looking for.
Yes. Sure, there's a, yeah, there's like a couple changes. Couple changes in there, if you want to enlighten folks on where those come from.
And so the biggest change that we're asking for is in our staffing. And so the goal since I have arrived has been to move away from outside assessing. Or that's part of what I discussed with the previous administration. And I think that that is a, a goal that this administration also is, you know, something that they want us to continue to pursue. And so that goes with getting more qualified personnel here to be able to handle the things that we're outsourcing. And what I'm asking for is an extra 60,000, which would be a salary for an assistant assessor. So we had Sandra as an assistant assessor. She really was working toward, you know, being really handling all the full responsibilities of assistant assessor. But what, what I'm feeling that we need is the ability to, if we can attract someone and have a qualified person apply, we need to be ready to, to pay a salary, a competitive salary to that person. It, it's difficult with assessing because there's not a large pool of people out there that are qualified and have assessing experience. So I'm trying to put us in the best position to succeed by asking for this salary amount. I don't, you know, I can't guarantee that there's going to be someone out there. But if there is, we need to be ready to capture that person by having, you know, a competitive wage to offer. There's another change also that I saw, and that was in one particular professional services account where that was reduced. The salary or the, the amount for there was 85,000 in the last year. And it really should have remained the same, and I'm not sure what happened. But $30,000 was cut out of that. And that's really a contractual obligation that we have with RRG. And that was the amount for this fiscal 25, and we signed a three-year contract. So, you know, I'm not sure with what we're going to do on that. Although, one of the things that we're talking about is trying to do our best to capture some new growth by having an inventory done of our personal property. And if we are, I think we're going to be able to do that with ARPA funds. And if we do that, that's part of what we're paying RRG to do for us this year. Or not the, not the same exact thing, but part of it. And so I have talked with RRG and Harold about a potential reduction in the amount of the contract because of that piece where they are not going to be handling it. And what we're talking about is a, a full inventory, a measure and list of all the personal property done by an outside outfit. And it was something that RRG even kind of endorsed and thought that it would be a good idea. We've done a little bit of investigating on our own, which has led us to believe that this is something that really needs to be done. In my opinion, it's not fair for all the other businesses that we do know about to have so many businesses that we don't know about. Whether or not they're above our $10,000 exemption amount or not, it's still our obligation and our job as in the assessor's office to keep track of all these businesses. And there's many that we're missing.
Randy, can you remind us when that, that contract with RRG is out?
Yeah, it was basically, you were in that contract when I arrived in May of '22. And then it was renegotiated because they were, we were paying them to be the assessor, the principal assessor, chief assessor. But since I was coming in, there were certain things that were eliminated from it. And so, you know, it was a lot more than, it was like 110,000 or 130,000. And we got it down to like a 75 or 78 or 9, which is built up to the 85, which is just a gradual increase that is a normal thing. And so we renegotiated for three years and then fiscal 25 is the third year. Part of that also going toward our goal of being more independent was teaching me, one of the pieces that I don't know, I'm an MAA and I have my mass accredited assessor. I have my certification with the state. But there's some things that I don't have as much experience with, and they are teaching me that part of that that I don't know. So that will be able to become even more independent. And that's really kind of the crunching of the numbers and adjustments to the tables in our database to adjust to market value. And that's something that's largely done by consultants in many other towns. But there are assessors that know how to do it themselves. Most of them are out east, and it just makes you more valuable to whatever town or city that you're in, if you're able to do that. Because that's less of an expense that you have to have, you know, pay someone else to do when you have your qualified staff in-house that are able to do it. So that was part of how the contract was written for me to be getting taught by RRG in these three fiscal years. To be able to become more independent at the end of it and, you know, renegotiate a different contract. I, I do feel that RRG, there's a great advantage to having an affiliation with RRG. And I don't want to terminate our, our, our relationship with them. But I do want to become less dependent, and I think that we could do that by adding more staff in-house. And I think that we're, if we're handling more things on our own, we're going to, it's going to be done more efficiently. And we won't have things falling through the cracks because we're going to take a little bit more ownership of the data than I, in, in my opinion, that consultants sometimes do.
I guess one question I have is for the mayor that, so there was a reduction. Is there a plan to supplement that with other funding? Is that why it's not the general budget?
You put like little star next to this, to this one, there'll be a few of those. This was one that I was not aware that there was, that there was a contract. I also was not aware of the reduction. And there are a couple that we'll have a little star with as we go through the budget. To make it interesting to go into the middle. I'm just going to tell you the truth, that's true. So I'm, I'm writing that in the back of the book. I was aware of that after this went to print and talked to Randy. And you'll hear a couple more, not an enormous amount, as we go along. And there are some things like Anna spoke about at the beginning, where we actually purposely and intentionally, with my knowledge, took things out contractual or whatever one-time expenses and offset them to ARPA because we were behind this year. That, this was one that it's contracted with.
And Mayor, I'm not sure if I, you know, I did mention that I had been talking with Harold. And I'm not sure if I had gotten to the point where I had mentioned to you that he, he did, you know, he's entertaining the idea of reducing the amount if we're going with that other personal property project. So that will help in that capacity anyway. And I don't have an exact dollar amount to say, but at least, you know, the, the contractual obligation that we had of that 85 is going to be, we'll, we'll be able to lessen it a little because we're doing this other project, which is going to get paid for out of the ARPA. So that will help a little bit, and I really hadn't had the chance to kind of let you know that, I don't think yet. But I just wanted to mention.
Okay.
Well, how is that going, by the way, Randy? The personal tax?
So the personal property, we, we had our board members kind of help us with an inventory of what we had. And I, they were, you know, really great about wanting to be more involved and took this on as a project because it was something that, you know, with the staffing that we have right now, it's just something that should be done every year, but I didn't, haven't had the chance to do since I've been here. And they went out and walked the streets and, and took an inventory of businesses that we had. And that was part of what made us feel that, you know, you know, made me want to recommend that we really need this full measure and list done because we found, you know, many, many businesses that, that just weren't on our radar and we didn't have an account for. As I had mentioned before, I don't know if, if all of you councillors are aware, but for personal property, you have an exemption amount of $10,000. If your business and your personal property total value is $10,000 or less, you don't pay a bill. So there are some accounts, small attorney, that have just an office and, you know, receptionist and a couple of computers and a printer. Well, that's not going to add up to, you know, $10,000. But by mass general laws, it's still up to us, is the assessor's office, to be aware of those and keep track of them. And so, you know, we just saw way too many businesses that were not identified. And I had other things leading me to believe that even the information that we had on some businesses that we did identify needed to be updated. And I really think that when we go through this project, it's going to pay for itself with the new growth and new tax dollars that we're going to capture from it. And, and in my past experience, that's the way it's always gone, is when you do a project like this, you always, it pays for itself and you get, you know, new growth dollars in excess of the cost of it. So I'm anticipating that's what we're going to see. It's great that we're able to use the ARPA funds to pay for it. And, you know, ultimately, that will get realized as, as new growth. And that's one of the reasons that we were after that, because we're looking for as much new growth as we can capture. And that's only going to help ease everybody the total tax burden.
I got a follow-up on that, if you don't mind. Okay, might be two parts. So equipment is considered personal property, right? Like excavators or dump trucks, et cetera?
Yeah, depending on the type of corporation and the setup, sometimes stuff is tools of the trade. You know, if you're a manufacturer, your stuff is exempt, so there's a few ins and outs of it. But yes, that
The follow-up to that would be if that particular business that has that equipment is leasing the property from a property owner. So their business is, they're paying, basically, they're paying rent to a, a, a landlord and they're running that business out of that. So that, so that equipment is taxable to the owner of the business and not the landlord, correct?
Yes, absolutely correct.
Perfect, thank you.
And so that's why it's up to us to know that that business is there. We know who owns it, but it's up to us every year to keep track of businesses. And like I said, we, when we went out and just had my board members doing that inventory, we found way too many accounts that I was comfortable with that were not recorded. And as your assessor, one of my big motivations is trying to be fair. I don't want anyone to pay for something that they don't have value-wise, but I don't want anyone to not pay for something that they do have. And that's what I think that this is going to uncover, which ultimately is going to lead to new growth and more tax dollars. And, and just to be fair, it's not fair to have people that are here giving us their form of list. are here giving us their form of lists and paying a personal property bill to have us not doing our due diligence and, and getting every business in town. So those are part of my, my motivations to recommend this. And we've got a great opportunity with the ARPA funds to get it done and, and now sooner than later. And then so in addition to that, yeah, we, there's stuff that I'm putting in place to get that, the ball rolling on that. And we're trying to get it done and have spoken to, we, we believe that we'll be able to get it done for this fiscal year because it is kind of late. We, we just came upon this idea a little bit, you know, late into the calendar year. But we, we still should be able to get it done. I've been assured that we should be able to get it done for this fiscal year. So I, I think that'll be a good thing for us to do and it's gonna result in some, some new growth and tax dollars that's gonna help us out overall.
Just wanted to say one thing on that. Thank you, Randy. We just formed an ad hoc committee for new growth. And have people from economic development, planning, building inspector, assessors and RRG together. We had a two-hour meeting last week. We just had a kickoff meeting on that so that we we are making sure that we don't miss any new growth. So that one thing, if Eric Turog was giving a special permit for marijuana cultivator, none of it actually, it's wonderful, but it doesn't make it to the finish line unless you get that new growth. So we're putting everybody in a room so that we can do that. And we're going to continue to meet a building permit. We instructed everybody to drop the dime and tell, see anybody that has a building permit, know anybody, make sure that those things get done. But it has to get to the finish line. That group is what's gonna make it possible to pay for all the salaries, et cetera, and increases as we go on. And Randy will be instrumental in that.
So Randy, can I just ask you, with this addition of this other position, would that in effect, as you're, you're saying this contract will be out with RRG in 2025, would that still be a service we would need or would by hiring this extra position essentially replace that, that need and we'd be able to cover it all in-house?
And that's the goal. Now covering it all in-house, I'm not sure that we would be able to do. And it depends on who, who we're able to attract. You know, another thing that I regarding a new employee is that, yes, there's limited staff out there. I'm asking for, you know, X amount of dollars so that we're in the best position to hire that qualified personnel if they're available. But at the same time, I don't want to, because there's not a large pool of people that do this. I want, I don't want to wait forever. And if we have to, I'd like to just hire someone at an entry level and basically start training our own qualified personnel. So, you know, that could leave some extra money in the budget that we don't end up using. But ultimately, when this contract is over, we're gonna renegotiate and it's not gonna be $85,000. Because we still have them coming in and we're paying them to be our staff to a certain, a certain extent. So yes, we're, we're, we're sort of, we're making an investment in this office right now, but next year's budget, we're gonna be able to reduce it by that 60,000 or, or very close. Because we're gonna be able to independently stand on our own. And so, yes, I had mentioned, I still do want to have a relationship with RRG. I, I don't want to pay them as much as we're paying them though. Because we should be able to do in-house a lot of the stuff that, you know, is in the contract. And even, you know, part of the contract is we still have someone coming in for one day a week from RRG helping us along. And, and part of that was for the expertise of having an assessor and that's really, well, we don't need that now that I'm here. So we do need more staff so that we can do some of the higher level stuff. And if we can't, then we're gonna have to slowly move toward that. But we've gotta be ready to put ourselves in the best position possible. If we can attract someone that's got experience, then we'll be able to, you know, reduce that or maybe even, you know, stand on our own to a certain extent. Like I said, it's a good thing, especially when we have a city to have a, a relationship with a consultant. And especially when it comes to commercial and industrial values. Some of the different development things that are going on here with solar and, and different things. And even Harold is preparing a package for, for information that he thinks are things that we could do to economically develop Greenfield that he's seen succeed in other communities. So I've been, and you know, this is my sixth municipality. I really say five because one of them is my small town of Montgomery. And there's only 800 people here, so I kind of don't count it. But Harold, you know, he's, he's dealing with 40 different communities and he has seen, you know, some our size, some bigger, some smaller, but he's seen what has worked in different communities. And he's he's preparing to, you know, try and help us out with what he has seen succeed and, and help us along the way. So i- it's a great relationship to have and maintain. But obviously, you know, for the lowest dollar amount possible. And that's what we're gonna be figuring out as we get toward the end, you know, basically at this time of year, next year, we'll be negotiating with Harold to see if we are gonna continue with a contract and what exactly it's gonna entail. And, you know, one of the goals is gonna have it be to, to shrink that to as, as small a possible amount as we can while still maintaining everything that we need to successfully service the people and, you know, residential, commercial and industrial in personal property, you know, for the city of Greenfield.
Thank you. All right.
Thanks, Randy.
Randy, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Good luck making that hire. Finance and accounting. Kind of strangely enough, others, first part of that. Alex and Kelly. You're in here for this as well. Joe, if it's not.
I can take.
Are you doing accounting? All right. We'll start with it. We're gonna go right in order, just as listed, just so anyone out there knows. We're just gonna start with accounting.
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three.
So this one, well, we're looking now to hire someone. This one is pretty much very close to last year's budget. And we, where you see software assessment, that was a reduction by the mayor, that's gonna offset to ARPA. And that's salary line, both for the finance director will be negotiating that for, for the, you know, we are hiring now or advertising now, but there's not major increases to that line. Some of the, the finance director in the past, we're picking up some of the procurement things. So we are also looking for a procurement person, but that's not in this. That is not covered.
Questions on this, guys? So, folks.
Or is it procurement officer is concerned? Is that a I mean, I imagine there's substantial qualification to be in that position. Would they be an independent physician? Or part-time? Or how, how would that?
Probably gonna be a full-time. I, I think it's gonna be a full-time position. It was in Anara. A non-union position. There's certainly a lot of things to procure in the city and there's a lot of rules that go along with it. And
See, it did have one that would cover all the departments rather than?
No, I think that, like Alan Turog and DPW does a lot of, there's a lot of theirs. And they usually have somebody there that does theirs, but there's a lot of other things that need to be procured for the city. So probably we'll have a full-time procurement. So we're just posting that. We had it as halftime because the person was doing part there. And I would like to say that sitting here in front of us, we have people that helped the mayor this last week or a week ago when we were doing our first bid opening, people had some experience of purring, teeth strain. Chief Dodge came to help us. Also keep us, I wore my stripes, but it was to keep us out of jail while we were performing our first procurement. I'm just kidding, for those of you that listening, but because there's a lot to it and there's a lot of regulations. And, and Alan Turog was also here as and Terry's been very helpful. It's just that Terry came and he's been very helpful. So I thank those people for pitching in.
Well, we can move on to treasurer collector. She's there. There she is. Good evening. Anything you'd like to say about your budget?
Um, you know, my budget doesn't change much from year to year. You can see we did reduce the bonding issuance expense because we don't plan on doing another bond issuance this year. We did do a significant one just this February for the fire station and majority of the library. But other than that, I mean, expenses pretty much stay the same. We had contractual obligations to raise, you know, for salaries, but that's about it.
Any questions on the treasurer collector lines?
It's looking like a big increase in expenses. Am I?
Decreased.
Decreased, excuse me.
As you were just talking about the bond, the bond expense.
Yeah, we will, we'll issue a short-term note in the springtime, but that'll be all, just for some of the the remainder of the library and some of the other smaller projects that we've got going on. So we won't, that won't be as costly as a, an actual bond issuance.
Bank services is up from last year from 5,600. And I see that the, it was 25,000 requested and 10,000 in the mayor's budget. That's the bond issue.
That's the bond issuance. I do notice that for some reason, the bank services is not there and I'm not quite sure why.
Oh, I'm missing a line. Okay. I'm sorry. I circled it. Thank you. I'm sorry about that.
Bank service fees. So I'm not sure why that's zero.
Okay.
Thank you for clearing up my.
Normally it's $5,000. It's not a large sum of money.
Okay. Thank you.
So there might be a slight adjustment there. Anything else, folks? All right. Moving on. So go right over to legal labor. Who wants to handle that? The mayor?
Yeah, I'll take that. Legal labor stayed, stayed the same. We're using Sullivan Hazel Quinn for all of the legal now. And they actually have stayed like pretty much the same per hour. I don't actually remember what the figure was, but in July one, they were going up like $5 an hour. They've worked for the city for a long time. And so there's just the same. I'm gonna go over to city if I can go further because I'm doing both of those. Is that okay, Councilor?
I was just gonna, just for anybody inquiring, that was a about a 50% increase from last year?
Yep.
Budget?
Legal?
Uh, yeah, legal labor. Yeah, it was from 65 up to 95.
Yeah, one of the $30,000.
That just because we saw what realistically was?
Well, so it was 65.
65 was FY24's budget.
Right.
That was
Ninety-five.
The whole total for legal labor last year. However, it was 95. Is that not correct?
No, we got actuals for FY23 was 72.
Yeah.
We got a budget for FY24 was 65. And then, and then the request and your budget were both at 95 for this year. So it was up 30 grand from FY24's budget. So I don't know if that is because of actual changes since we did the FY24 budget.
And I know we ended up allocating more money for legal, just
Couple. Right.
To cover things in this year's.
Right.
So I'm just I'm looking at this, I'm looking, and I'm comparing last year's book, which I'm looking at. Last year, the total, I, what we, it says that we approved last year in '24 was 95.
65.
I see that. I see what you're looking at. I know that, I'm just gonna tell you on all legal lines, not on Yeah. Yeah. That is, that is the figure. The 65 is the figure for labor special litigation. And there is a labor relations. It was 30,000. So the total last year to be approved was 95,000 in the actuals, I totally believe.
So it looks like they left out the labor relations.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
Exactly.
Good. That makes sense.
Exactly.
I'll tell you, those are great.
But at least this is very good. The very good part of that is that and the number that is in there is gonna be very close to what it is on legal labor. Going, can I go down to city? And we can go back to that if you want to ask me more questions on that. That's fine. Town attorney services did have a significant increase from 100,000 to 150,000. And you've already had before you one order to move money over to the labor line. You haven't ordered once so far since you've been, all of you have been in office. There'll be another one coming because there's $12 left in that. And we have actually $12. And we have more legal bills outstanding. It has been an expensive legal year. But I think by putting it up to 150, we're closer and I we're closer to the goals.
Something tells me that line might be a little bit less going forward.
Just gonna ask Mayor, if you're, if you're forecasting it to the future, and I know, you know, there were things that came up as you came into office, we'll just say. You know, what's, how are things looking legally? Things wrapping up?
Right. Yes, there's a lot of things wrapped up. We have, I would just say one thing, maybe. And
Because we, as a city, I don't want to spend a lot of money.
I was just saying.
We predict that exactly how that's gonna go, but hopefully all things going forward, we we're very careful before we pick up the phone to call because if you decide to call it, call something, but you know, we do have some things that are being appealed right now. Everybody has the right to do that. It's all good. But I'm, I'm not exactly sure where it will go. I just know we were over this year. So but whenever we're sending something that's subsequent, it's because there's a bill there that the money in that account to.
One in 22 actuals lends some credence, the idea this money might be necessary anyway, unfortunately.
Yeah, just thinking like, if there are practices or things that need to change so that we don't have to hand legal because that's the, after things have happened.
Right. Right. Well, the other thing that was sort of a a huge thing this year, which costs us quite a bit, was the open meeting law violation. So there were, you know, there was a, a person who was, didn't even live here. Local, as you know, you were we had to have attorneys that you, you were paying for them to drive out, prepare for the case, the hours that there's that. You know, I think we've, you and I, we've all done everything we can. We've gone over things. Clerk's cloud's gone over things with everybody. So everybody knows there should be roll call votes on everything. You're gonna send the visa, you go into the second session. So, uh, roll call votes on everything. We've got hybrid and we're all trying to do everything right to go through the open, you know, and meetings so that, but there is a many, many, it's not just this city. Many people's, many cities, people are looking at for open meeting law. Many, many, it's not just this city. Many people's, many cities, people are looking at for open meeting law. So that's a lot.
But also, you know, we can't predict anything, but leadership, there's important. So hopefully with. Great department heads and people who are chasing the climate in their divisions, that some of this stuff will fall away. We pray, hope.
That's fair, yeah.
I'm a. Everyone else is satisfied with that portion. Really interested in the tax title.
Yeah.
Fascinating.
I'm still here.
Kelly.
Much of a tile version of it.
Yeah, I'll be back later on the evening. Um, so tax title, we actually went down last from last year's budget. We actually have, you know, because I am consistent with my collections, we have less and less people every year going into tax title. So the less people we have in tax title, the. Less we have to spend on our legal expenses. Hoping the next year they'll be smaller than that, so.
Yeah. I was I was making fun of the typo.
Oh.
Very consistent.
Is a typo in there?
Oh, it is. It's all about tiling.
Oh, file pilot. Yeah.
Nice back splash for conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna save myself. All right, any questions on that? That's actually that's that's down. Uh, Kelly was saying that that is. Actually, it's pretty significant.
Yeah.
I think I only had like thirty people go in the paper this year and maybe half of those people actually end up in tax title, so that's a significant decrease from years before, so.
Yeah, it's a big decrease.
Yeah, wow.
All right. Uh, what we got next? We got HR.
He's cleaning out the crowd here.
Wants to handle that.
I said I would cover HR, so that's funny.
That's the old guy. You wanna follow the sort of.
Giving everything there.
No, I there there when when it was it was a little change. Offer for some department heads to take them off the hook so that they didn't have to come in for an extra evening. And if I didn't get to you, if I didn't get to you just because I ran out of hours in the day, so I thought I would just help that way. HR is doing a great job. They have. Four people, they're fully employed. We'll see little change in that. Uh, session in in that budget increases where in salaries, um. And we try to increase salaries to keep in line with inflation. Um, and you saw that you can see a cut in purchase of service there, fifteen thousand. And that was that's gonna be offset to ARPA. So I did that and while I have this, I want to point out that on page sixty four, we've been in seventy five thousand dollars. Lots of. Okay, because we have all those days. That was that was like another. Paid for things we had to, but we have lots of savings.
Okay, I didn't see that, but yeah.
Okay, yes, we every year we put seventy five thousand dollars in reserve and then usually that. Uh, was not used in substitute cash.
You could see that in the early part of the budget and the preamble.
So that's all.
All right. Fernando, I see up there. Your turn, man. Technology fun.
Well, good evening, everyone. Um. Uh, I'm really proud of all the accomplishments that my department had this last year. Uh. We're in the middle of accomplishing more with the uh fire station. Um, that being said, I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Let's hear's the position administrator. Cut that. Yeah, saying is that blue builder.
That that's a bonus. That position. Fernando is working so hard, he and his staff. He's had that position in and and. It's like a one on paper, I think, that's all I say. He's gonna need that position will be put back in last year. He's doing the. Get the fire station going, everything. Actually, I would save Fernando from not stepping out of line that we put that in. There wasn't enough hours in the day to get that person hired. It's not that he doesn't. Not that he's not needing that, but for this year, we we took that out. Expect that to be coming back in next year. Did I say that okay, Fernando?
No, correct. That's a case of the plumber's plumbing, right? Uh. We were really busy. I just wasn't able to, didn't have the bandwidth. No pun intended to uh. To get to get that position in place.
And then I see that management consulting was a.
Cut? Yes, so basically I use that as um. Uh, that's where some of the one time projects go. For example, I wanted to do a cybersecurity assessment for the city independent. Uh, and some training and implementation of of more of finance systems of modules. But they're one time and they're um they are supposed to be coming out of ARPA. So that's why that was erased by thirty thousand.
Well, that one's going to ARPA. As well.
Yeah. Yeah. Cool. And I mean, sometimes I do use a consultant for minor things, so just to double check what we did. But uh. That's why that's that's not there this year.
Great.
Am I um am I right in thinking that what in last year's budget book was called software maintenance is the same thing as licensing and support?
It's. Yes, that is licensing and support, so basically keep it in one bucket.
And um. Is that just maintaining licenses on software that already exists on city computers and paying those licenses?
Correct, correct. Anything from uh the software that it's uh used for our dispatch?
Yeah.
Um. Down to the Microsoft license to do Word.
That's really outside of cities' control. That's basically vendors' charge rate. We have to pay.
Exactly, you know, there's you depending on the company, they'll go up between five to ten percent every year.
Yeah.
Um, and it's we really, it's really what. The city uses in order to run, right? But every department runs out. There's barely anything in there that is really used for the IT department.
Yeah.
It's it's mostly to keep our city running.
It uh it reminds me of the DPW. You're talking about the price of asphalt going up. It kind of feels like a similar sort of thing, you know?
No, it is. Uh, Marlo and I always talk about how our departments are very similar. In many ways, because there are many layers underground that people don't know, and the same thing with technology, you know, you you see the computer and things are running, but. There are many things that are out there uh that are needed in order to keep it running.
Thank you.
So I'm guessing this is just a typo because when I look at the line for budget. FY twenty four. The total is showing us two sixty one. Which is, you know. Then we'd be doubling total.
Uh.
And then you've got expenses is twenty one thousand.
No, that that is that is a very. Yeah, that is a huge typo. Like, there's a hero missing. There's a whole space missing there.
Three hundred thousand dollar typo.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to make sure that we're not doubling your budget, um, because I don't see where that's being doubled.
No, I I'm competing with Microsoft and IBM now, you know, so no, that's definitely a big but big, big typo.
Okay, thank you.
Do you guys pay for AWS?
I I do have some.
I have. Two day shipping? With it?
Uh, I I put. Yeah, I can give you a deal.
Just wondered if you're paying for it somewhere else.
That's all.
We're using his personal prime account.
Yeah. Well, if there's anything else, uh. Everything pretty much stays the same for us is, you know, those those costs that just increase every year, you know, sometimes. Higher than others. This year, all actually our our hardware costs didn't go as much. Uh, because I don't have any firewalls or network equipment that needs to be replaced.
Great. Who else?
Nothing.
Well, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Yeah.
Seventy nine.
Seventy nine. You'd like to handle that?
You can try let someone off the hook on that one, too. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, licensing?
Yeah.
Destroy?
Yeah.
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 Sure.
Relatively.
Yep. Um. There's one person in licensing that's a point eight position. Um. And. There are very little changes in that contractual. But I'd like to say she does a great job and I've got to my first licensing meeting. I've asked a whole bunch of great people volunteer on licensing. It's really kind of fascinating. They're watching out for all of you. Really, we very appreciate it. They're they're, you know, they. They watch out for every angle of all the licenses that are there. And uh, a lot of things that are happening up the spear downs and they're paying attention, right? It's kind of fascinating, but salaries about unchanged. Very hardworking individual.
No, a hundred and fifty dollars on mileage.
All right, we're planning and development.
I think you told me. Sorry, I thought you said that, really.
And development, there. Um. And had conservation in that also. Uh, that was Eric that I spoke of before and we have matches the conservation. Uh, agent, there's very little changes in that. Purchase of service was offset there that we're going to to operate. Uh, anything that. Increased conservation agent was contractual and then we do this. Uh. Small cost of living increase for both of the. Those folks that had the contract with the mayor, but they do a good job. They have one arm of revenue and the conservation people watching out for our. That clean bank.
All right. Uh, you gonna go planning board? The conservation.
Sure, these are just. Are pretty.
Yeah.
Regular.
Two dollars.
Yeah. Our regular like stipends that.
Ninety five percent of boards actually are everyone that you see, they're giving something in case there is some. Thing that they need money for, and ninety five percent of the time they turn that in. You'll see that for almost very board occasions. I was on disability access for, I don't know how long, only one year did we actually spend that money and that was because we had a can't find the hour. So it would be if somebody had to go to a class or I actually can't think of what the other things would be, but it might be something. We actually bought a level in so in in disability access, a level and something that measured how heavy doors were. So that we could check on things if somebody complained about something, but that would be type incidentals and it's it's kind of just in case.
All right, I guess we go to central services, yeah?
ZB.
Same, they're all.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, um, central services, this 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 is one that's, as I said, this is one that's in. A little bit in flux with the budget that you will see before you. Um. We had a figure there last year, somebody was absorbing part of that and as this is going to print, um. But this is. The central services, that salary and wages is. There, that was procurement, just the top line. So that was an individual that person left. In January and went over to fur cog and then someone else absorbed doing a lot of the duties. And so you'll see that the mayor's budget for this year was twenty seven, six oh eight. I think we'll probably be hiring a full time. Procurement person because, as I said before, somebody else had to do some of those duties, but procurement.
Didn't that go up in the other?
Right, it was on the other.
The other budget already, right? Wasn't that the the increase? So is that just being moved over completely or?
Uh. So what's presented here in the budget was at the time this went to print was what we what I was thinking, that that was gonna be happened. And I just wanted to be truthful, but I'm thinking a little bit differently right now that we're actually looking at. Full time. It's not that I'm saying that there's more money. It's sometimes you're putting it under one line item at one time. If I'm saying that correctly. And then you're thinking about what budget you'll put it up. And it talked about with our grant writer, a half time, there's no such thing as a half person, but a happy position was under my budget and then we moved the whole. You know, we added, I will always tell you, if we're adding a position, we added a half a position and moved that to this. Um, this procurement position, part of those duties were being absorbed by someone else. And. Um, I cannot really. I can't explain very well all of the expenses that are in this. Um. I am not the best person to talk to you about. Uh, the copy machines and telephones and cell phones, et cetera. Um, and. But I don't know that they're significantly from one year to the next. We have questions about those. I will try to get those to you for the next time. I'm looking at this as we speak. Yeah, I can't tell you a lot about copy, copy your expenses for what telephone expenses, that's not mine.
Probably leased, it's my guess.
I mean.
It probably leased is my guess. That's includes their contract there. That's at least how it works at school I work at is we don't own them. When it comes out, it works on them.
What I can tell you is it doesn't look like there's a huge change in the expenses. So.
So we moved, so the what we said earlier is the grant writer was moved out, correct?
Grant writer was moved out from, no, the grant writer was moved out. I was just using as an example from the mayor's. Mayor's actual. Budget.
Yes.
And moved over to economic development.
Right.
I told you with this budget, what you're looking at right now in front of you, it says the mayor's requesting. Twenty seven, six oh eight. And that was because of the time that this was going to print.
Right, you were gonna have to.
That's that's what the plan was. We, I just wanted to tell you upfront that I may be looking at a different plan if. And I will come in if I'm making a supplemental or if I'm offering the new person that we have a different salary part of this week. But we may probably gonna hire a full time. I mean, I see other wonderful people who are still on this line of asking people. Uh, Kelly, you know, Kelly and Angelica. Um, maybe. Finance people are the other topic we probably do. I'm gonna need somebody. Tell it, I said we had people keeping help. I guess the first things.
So that was my question, Eric, because it it sounded like you said under the finance, you were adding the. Well, procurement person will be there, so is is this two separate? People, I'm.
Her sap, that salary in finance was bigger than a year before because we'd added some of the procurement duties to the finance director's job.
Okay.
That's what I meant.
Okay.
And sometimes I don't explain that all as clearly as I could have. Um, so. That's why there's a half.
Okay, so.
Got it? Did I?
Yes. So no procurement person in finance, they're in.
Yes.
Central services.
Got it.
Uh, energy. Also.
Yeah, I'm high.
Hello. Anything you'd like to say about the? Changes?
I guess. One thing I'd just like to address and it's kind of just come to me while I've been on this meeting is uh. There are a lot of changes. Basically, the budget for the energy department tracks all the energy. For each of the buildings, but they all tell a story and it's a really great story. We're doing really well, so I'm I'm excited about that. Uh, I'm excited to be back and and the other piece that kind of um is. Really just been dawning on me is that Greenfield boasts the first energy department in in at least the western part of the state and it's been. That way for over a decade now and um so. You know, it was just sort of like, what do we do next? I don't know. Let's try this. Let's do that. And now we have finally a. And now we have finally a climate chief, the first in the country, Melissa Hoffer at the state level and recommendations are coming out and, and reporting and so in, in my world, it's great to feel like there's finally some kind of path to follow. Not that you know, we've done well regardless, but I'm excited because that brings a lot of new, we have new financial, federal monies and tons of projects and it's all really positive for Greenfield and so I just wanted to say how excited I am. And I'm happy to answer any questions and thank you very much.
I have I'm, I mean, this, this small ballers, but I'm looking at the third quarter year-to-date budget report and you haven't used any consultant service because at all.
Yep.
And is that typical?
It varies year to year, I try to get as much as I can for free. So I, for a lot and it usually works. It's also honestly not that easy to find consultants that can provide what I would like to have, but I would say the other piece of that is that the position has been vacant since September, I just came back a few weeks ago. So that's a, those factors combined mean we haven't used it and I don't really have, do I, I, I have someone on the hook for free to get me.
That's good, we like that, that is good. One other question. Contracts services. All right, I can't see.
At the end, I think, towards the end and we did get rid of.
Yeah, I'm trying to. So you, you've got a lot of money left over in that through the third quarter or am I looking at the wrong line? Oh, your eyes.
Well, I do know that we had a contract that we really didn't, anyway. Diana Schindler help and, and, and we were able to terminate that contract because it wasn't providing us with anything useful to the city. So eliminated it roughly about $15,000 a year. So that is part of the reason and I'm trying to look at everything.
What do you have for this year plugged in for that? There's I understand, an increase at 2,800? Oh, okay, so.
Contract services, huh?
Yeah.
We've increased over the ask, I didn't know if there was something like that, I noticed second page afterwards.
This is on page nine.
Uh, 95.
Yeah. Oh, so that's absolutely less.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, cool. Perfect, that's all I needed to know, thank.
Right there.
I do not know.
Know what the increase was for?
I do not know, sorry.
The increase from
1,000.
1,000, the budget came in at 2,800, is there, you remember something about it or is that?
I'm sorry, there was a placeholder put in there and again, then I came back and, and I don't, I'm sorry that I don't have it right in front of me. It, we have like we pay a consult, a broker for our gas contract, we there's a few smallish things, so I can get you that, I just don't know off the top of my head right now.
I didn't know there was a reason for the increase or if that was just like some sort of erroneous thing.
I want, can I say one thing on this? I want to say that Carol came back and we were just about ready to go to print. And if you'll see, both of the like electricity users, it had the, you know, the departmental ask and then there's like the mayor's request. What actually happened with that was that Carol was going through and making sure that we were applying all the credits. So she does, but by the time she finished and we were ready to go, it was, I think like $150,000 less. She's also you know, that attention to detail, we have that, the solar on top of the library, which actually is functioning.
Good.
But we're not getting the tax credits and the solar credits. All of those, there has to be somebody that does that. I have the person's number that we're going to be reaching out to, probably Friday when Carol's going to procurement class right now. We're just jack of all trades, all of us. And she comes back, she pointed out that yes, it is working, it's, it's working, connecting, but the credits aren't coming to the city. And it's that attention to, like that will be done, fear not. She gets this on every, you know, on every single one, she's going down one at a time, giving it to me and I'm ready to come out here and present it to like department heads. But I can't say enough, but having somebody do that and, and something like that is actually making sure that the city is getting credit for it, is huge. And you know, so over the EV charger out front to, and I think the, the fire chief help was helping that, sharing an extra EV charger with the, with the out back here so that there's one that people are paying for so that we're not giving electricity anything, you know, giving the electricity rate free. She leaves no stone unturned and makes sure that the city's getting credit for it, that's all I wanted to say.
This is just a comment, but with all the work you all are doing on sustainability and conservation. You know, at what point do we think we'll see sort of the energy costs of the city go down? You know, I, I know we have to also do all these projects and the expense side to make it happen cost money, but.
I guess I would like to address that and that's a great question. And I, the one thing that is maybe a little bit difficult to tease out, but over the years, every year you've heard of other cities having to cut things or get rid of things because of the increase in their utility costs and how much more it's costing to operate their buildings. We haven't had to do that because not only are we making very wise use of energy and, and being incredibly efficient, but we're, I, I do all of these projects without any capital, it's all used, you know, grants, incentives, leveraging different pots of money, working with different agencies, so we, we are seeing that savings, it's just that you know, costs keep going up and we're keeping parity and not having it get us like, you know, some other communities, so unfortunately you don't see maybe, I, I don't, I don't know. But, but basically we're not spending as much on energy, our percentage is going down, we've reduced our energy consumption by close to 30% in the city since 2008. That's money we're not spending anymore on energy and and then costs fluctuate and we do the best we can on that front also. And we have our Greenfield Light Power and, and you know, we do what we can to, to offer options for people, so it's, I wish it was easier to tease out all the numbers, but if I, if it means anything, two thumbs up, we're we are doing well.
Thank you, it'd be great to figure out how to tell that story better so that the public can see like what their investment is going towards, because that's, that's huge.
Well, it, it, we did do it and, and it's just a moment in time and it keeps growing and the last time it was close to 5 million. And that includes the solar farm on the landfill, which is a banner. That already is over $3 million in savings that the city's realized, that was amazing and but to, yeah, so someone needs to invent a program where we can just plug in the numbers and it tells us.
Welcome back.
Great, glad to meet you. All right, well, thank you. Jump in here, I think. Going over to health. Health Department, 147.
Oh, you're skipping the
Sorry, chiefs. I should have had Jamie put a note there that said, don't show up before seven. Hello.
How we doing?
Good. Good to meet. Walk in, he's moving, are you being city hall? Are you coming right now?
No, I'm actually in the hospital.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I'm here to answer any questions. I wasn't the one who drafted this budget, the only increase that I had was to nursing supplies, just because we used a lot of the COVID grant money for nursing supplies before and we might lose that, we're not quite sure, but nursing supplies went up in general anyways, so we did increase it from 1,500 to 5,000.
Cool. Makes sense.
Everything, just general increases in salaries, I believe.
How many slides?
Like reduction as well, but.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm saying, that's right.
This may see, this may see a supplemental, I just wanted to point that out, did notice the number of FTEs.
Yeah, and so there's an increase in staff, correct?
We did just get approved for our grant, EHE grant for the state for the next three years too, so that will be helpful.
So on the uniforms, do you dress up like the, like the who's the guy that the health general?
Oh, inspector general or, or no, the surgeon general.
Surgeon general, you get like, like your uniform with scrambled eggs on the apple.
No, I bought those uniforms to be a little more expensive.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, really, here.
For real. Counsel on aging.
It's all of us. Except you, Mike.
Except me.
Are you talking to me?
Oh, you too.
Thanks.
Uh, hi.
We're all aging.
Very true, very true.
Can you hear me okay?
No, we can, yep.
Okay, great. Um, I want to apologize, my voice is not behaving itself, so I might fade out and I will try to be brief because of that. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to address this public body, I appreciate the work that you do and I do not envy the decisions that you have to make in the coming weeks because I know that it is, you know, a serious charge that is upon you and there's never enough to go around in any budget year. Uh, my name is Hope McCary, I'm the director of the Greenfield Senior Center. I'm a registered nurse and where, we all wear lots of hats at the senior center. We have a budget of three on two are full-time, you can see that in your budget book. We are the small S of city departments, you've got your streets, your schools and your safety and then you've got the small S, which is the seniors. Our budget represents point 004% of the overall city budget. Uh, seniors age, we serve age 55 plus. Seniors age 65 plus are 24% of the city population. We have 39% of our households in Greenfield have at least one person who is 65 or older. And 23% of our residents have a disability and many of those are seniors, so we have a pretty large service population. About 5,000 seniors as of the 2020 census to serve with our 2.8 staff. I'm really proud of our staff. And I heard the mayor say earlier, jack of all trades and I, I I love that because the, the full quote, as, as I'm sure many of you know, is jack of all trades is a master of none, but oftentimes better than a master of one. Uh, so we're really proud of the work that we do at the senior center. We, we have a lot of different programs going, the digital equity grant has been a lot of fun. That was a grant for $100,000, we have distributed about 50 iPads to our seniors and our they, they, it's called tech savvy seniors and I'm going to say that they are all tech savvy, they've reached that point. Uh, among other things, you know, we have a meal program, we serve meals four days a week. We served several thousand meals last year. That's very popular and the, the main thing about the senior center is that it's an opportunity to socialize and we learned I think the general public learned during the pandemic, something that we in elder services have known all along, which is loneliness can kill you. We are, as humans, we're designed to interact with each other and as seniors, that's a, it's a really important part of aging and that is the essence of what we provide is a way for people to make those connections, build new friendships and maintain their, their social capacity. So I'm not going to go on anymore, but I do welcome any questions that you have, I will say we're, we're pretty much bare bones, most of our budget is personnel, that is, that is, I'm sure like almost all the departments that you're looking at. Uh, any cuts to our budget would result in, in a reduction of services and probably a reduction of operation hours. Because we don't really have anywhere to cut. But we are, we are, we love what we do and we love our seniors and it's a great place to be, some of you have been there during business hours and you know sort of the vibe that's there is, is really great, so thank you.
I think the only thing I, I'm noticing that it looks like there's an increase in FTE by point eight, but you know, barely a budget increase. So I just had a question about um, how you're able to add, add somebody for almost no increase of money?
So we've been level serviced for the past few years with the number of staff that we have, so I'm not, I'm not quite sure to what you're referring. We have myself, we have our fiscal manager who runs the, all of the offices and does our procurement and, and manages the invoices and such, we have our activities director, those are all from the general fund and then we have a 12-hour-a-week food services position that is not is not paid from the general fund, that is a block grant.
Okay.
And that's been level, that's been level staffing at that level for the past maybe three or maybe four years.
It was a little bit of, a little bit of
Yeah.
confusion with the funding source, that was all that that.
Okay.
That ended up being.
I figured it out, okay. Super, thanks.
Question, folks? Just thank you for all the good work you've done.
It's a pleasure, we really enjoy it, thank you.
You, if you know any registered Republicans who want to work as poll workers.
You know, they were recruiting today, we had a volunteer meeting and we had one of the, the, one of the poll wardens was recruiting and I said, stop, stop stealing my volunteers for your poll. But it didn't work, she already found a couple of new people, so you know, your poll workers are doing a great job, I have to say, they're motivated.
Need to cannibalize.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got better, it's back.
Good evening. So I guess we'll get right to our, our big increase, if you'll see where you have an 18% increase, I think it says for operating budget this, coming up this year. We are obligated by the state under mass general laws to fund veteran Um, we are obligated by the state under mass general laws, uh, to fund veterans benefits for our low income veterans. So over the past ten years, we've been going down every year as veterans pass away or move out of town. Um, we got to a level where we were pretty adequate and initially added five new veterans. So five new veterans at anywhere from eight hundred to a thousand dollars a month has strategically increased our chapter one fifteen benefits. So that's why you're seeing that large amount. Uh, and the big reason why we have more people coming in, inflation rate was so large last year. The percentage that the state sets of the goal for benchmark for somebody coming on a chapter one fifteen increased tremendously. So as that increases, more veterans that are low income are eligible and they get more money. So our chapter one fifteen budget has kind of ballooned out. It's not too bad, but the, the good thing about the chapter one fifteen budget is the town gets reimbursed seventy-five percent of that money back at fiscal year later. Uh, every quarter that the state reimburses it back that way. So that's where our big increase in costs are at.
And is that fall under the, the ordinary allowance part? Cause we don't have the, we only have to look back on the total, but not on the, the line items?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Is that pretty much just relegated to the ordinary allowance? Or did that kind of, does that stagger across those?
Yeah, so we have pretty some of them. We kept some at the same. So I can give you, uh, for last year. Yeah, the first line item there for the veterans benefits, ordinary allowance, that went up an extra thirty-five thousand. And then the, uh, the fuel allowance went up an extra eleven thousand. Medical benefits went up an extra fifteen hundred. Um, and then the grave markings, uh, that went up five thousand dollars, uh, because we get reimbursed actually seventy-five cents on every flag we put on all the graves on Memorial Day. So it comes out to a toll of about, uh, fifty-two, five hundred. That will give reimburse seventy-five percent. And our total increase was fifty-eight thousand for the whole year. So that's where our, our largest increase is at.
I could just, that's one good compliment. Chris, he was right over me in the point in my office because he saw the number of people had increased and he was, because every department head is responsible for staying within their budget. And I said, Noah, we gotta take care of those extra people that came in that he was right over alerting into the fact that his numbers were going to be over because he had five, you know, extra people. So he did a good job of that. Thank you.
It's ironic every, I know you're trying to recruit guys or you're advertising for the stuff. So we're trying to recruit people, but then when you recruit people, it costs a little money, you know?
Yeah. Well, the good thing is when we do have someone that comes in that qualifies for chapter one fifteen, we try to look at other benefits, other VA benefits that they could get every month to try and offset what state's paying them. Instead of the federal government paying, but then it's not come out of our budget. It's coming out of theirs. So sometimes we can get people off that, um, when they change different laws and rules, like they just changed, uh, eligibility for veterans. There's some of our veterans that weren't eligible for VA healthcare and now eligible for VA healthcare. So that's going to cut the cost of medical costs that we have for these people for their co-pays that we reverse. To balance and act time. Take it from one government, save the other government.
Well, thanks. Thanks for such a gratitude.
All right, well, I'm gonna bet myself, so. Guys, I love taking care of our own.
I'm gonna go in reverse alphabetical order next year. You know, reverse alphabetical order next year. In there. The other commissions, right? I think these are pretty much like the others.
Youth commission, right?
You got it. We can go right in order if you want. Some of these are kind of inactive still, is that correct?
Uh, so it is, uh, Human Rights Commission, we share this story. Ask, uh, access task force is the only ones youth commissions. We don't have that currently have a youth commission, so we didn't put money in the budget for that. All the others are here and a funding source that they need. It's like five hundred dollars each one of our.
This is a quick question on the commissions. The disability access, it looks like mass general law, domestic task force, domestic violence task force is charter. And human rights and youth commission, are those ordinances that establish those? I'm assuming people keep sticking around until perpetuity, basically. I'm like, I'm just curious. No idea.
I don't know.
Neither here nor there, just curious.
All right, moving to the library.
I did get my senior center membership not long ago, so. I'm Anna Bogdol and I am the new director of the library. I met you not long ago. Goodness, I think it was in March. Time flies. Um, and I have lots of paper because I always walk around with lots of paper, but it's all, all papers that tell, tell the story of what's happening at the new public library. Um, so just in terms of the request, this is my first time doing this. And, uh, when I looked at the request for FY twenty-four, that request I realized was built in FY twenty-three before the new library was open um, in very different places, very different times. Um, and I don't think that anyone expected the new library to be as highly successful as it is. I think they knew it was going to be different and better and more people, but I don't think that there was the feeling that it was going to be what it is. We're averaging close to six hundred people a day. A lot of people are open fifty-one hours a week. So, um, you know, it's a lot. I was just thinking when Hope said what age groups she serves, we serve zero to plus, 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 plus. And, uh, I was just thinking that our door counts don't consider the babies that are being carried in. So, you know, the numbers are high. Our children's room is really active in the early parts of the day. We story times, we have activities, so many wonderful things going on. Just a little more statistics. I'm a big statistics person. Um, since we opened, we've had four hundred and seventy-two programs that we've offered as of March thirty-first. We've checked out close to two hundred thousand items compared to last year, which was a hundred and forty-eight thousand. Um, so that's roughly twenty-one thousand items a month of items, meaning books, CDs, audio, whatever it is coming in and out of our library. So our statistics in, in that, in our materials area is off the charts, um, compared to before. And here all of my, wow, thank you to Lisa Proman for putting these together. But we, we, um, being, uh, partially funded by the state, by the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, every year we have to do lots of reporting, um, with all of this information. So we are very good at keeping statistics on what's going on. So again, we have our library visits per month. The dark green is last year FY twenty-three versus light green, which is today. Those are the average monthly visits. We just hit thirteen thousand people at four P M. today and we're open until eight P M. So thirteen thousand in the month of April. Um, it was twelve thousand nine hundred ninety-eight in March. Um, again, that's our average daily people coming in, dark green last year, light green. Um, I don't want to bore you with all of this, but materials borrowed again, dark blue is now, red is before. We're looking at, um, yeah, around twenty-two thousand items a month. Um, another really huge area is the number of reference interactions. That's people either calling or coming in person, asking us for help finding information. And we're averaging close to two thousand questions a month, um, with people coming in. And then this might be interesting. This is our computer use. This is the people coming in and using our computers. So we're averaging, uh, March was almost fourteen hundred people coming in to use our computers. So I guess.
More compute. We have more computers.
We have more computers. We have more computers, um, more room. We also have the laptops that people can, can borrow as well, but they're, it's active, it's constant.
How many desktops do you have?
Oh, my goodness, you're gonna ask me that right now. Um, I have to count them. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, sixteen, I think it's sixteen, sixteen. Uh, and we have two computers that we have dedicated to foreign language speakers. So they're set up with keyboards in Spanish or French and those don't get used as much. Um, we do get people saying, I can't find the right keys to type. And it's, haven't seen that it says French keyboard or Spanish keyboard, but hey, that's okay. Um, they just move on to another one. And then, um, wireless, we offer wireless connectivity. And it's also, we've always had wireless connectivity. But again, about two thousand, over two thousand people connecting in the month of March. And that's kind of the average. So I think I said this when I met with you before, you come into the library and it has a very different feel. It really feels like an urban library where people are coming in and doing all different things, whether it's an activity in the children's room or the making space or using a computer or having a meeting, lots of Zoom stuff going on. And then, of course, we have our meeting rooms, which are busy and that's where we're doing our programs and, um, uh, lots of other activities are happening there as well.
They're pretty well booked.
Yes, yes. You can go onto our website and look at the calendar and it's chock a block. It's a lot, a lot of good stuff. Um, and big news is that we did get our certificate of occupancy last Friday. So we are officially occupants of the building. And that was very big. And that will trigger, uh, the remaining funds from Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, which will be sent to the town. So that's a really big piece in terms of the grant for the, the building. Um, are there any questions before I delve into budget questions and? Yes.
Some kind of question, just about our visitors. Do you have any sense on how many people are from the city that are visiting? Greenfield residents versus folks in the county or?
So we, we can't tell that in terms of people coming in and out of the door, but we can tell who is borrowing our materials, which area they come from. I don't have that with me, but that is through our consortium, Central CW Mars, which is the, the, um, organization that we're part of. We, uh, co-share our collections and, um, every person who has a library card has a home library. And so we can, I can get that level of detail. I just didn't think to bring that one today. But, uh, yeah, so we do have obviously a lot of our home people, but we also have people coming from other libraries. And people in this area tend to hop around. They like to go to other libraries and borrow from different libraries, either going there and getting them or coming to us and ordering things that we might not have or our copies are out. Uh, right now we have a lot of people from South Deerfield coming to the Tilton libraries. Actually reopening tomorrow. They are getting a new, um, addition onto their building. And so they had to close for a bit of time to transition. They've moved into a church temporarily while their library is being renovated. So we were having a lot of people coming from South Deerfield. And a lot of the smaller libraries have very limited hours and we're open a lot. And so we do get a lot of people from neighboring towns coming to our library because we have the opening hours that they need. So we don't check anyone who comes through the doors. There's no kind of swipe system to say who's here, who's not here. If, you don't even have to have a library card to come use the library. So, um, and our computers are also, if you have a library card, you can log into the public computers with your card or you can get a guest pass. So it's not required to have a library card to use, uh, the computers. And that's just a digital equity and a standard that libraries follow, is access.
Also mentioned that they're responding from the, I think it's the Board of Library Commissioners.
Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners.
I don't see that.
It's not, it's separate. So that's called state aid. And in order to be recipients of state aid, we have to meet our municipal, um, requirement, our, I think, municipal allocation requirement. We have a lot of acronyms that you never remember what they stand for. Um, and that is being sufficiently funded by the city or the municipality um, on an ongoing basis. And every year that has to increase by two point five percent of, it's based on the past three years average, two point five percent. If we don't have municipal funding to the level required by the state, then we risk losing certification, which means we lose our connection with the consortium. We lose the ability to share materials. We, it, it's, it's a lot. It's, it's a big deal. And we get a nice amount of money from the state. It's based on our, um, um, kind of our, the municipal funding, plus if we're meeting all of the requirements, you have to be open fifty hours a week and you have to have certain services in place. You have to be open on the weekend and evenings, things like that. You can look at it. It's on the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, um, requirements for public libraries. Uh, so, and, and it, it's, the requirements are also based on population size. So we are roughly seventeen, eighteen thousand. They have different parameters where our requirements are fit into the size of your municipality, very, very detailed. But in many ways, it also, it helps libraries continue to exist in, in Massachusetts and providing the communities with resources that you can't always find in other places. So.
No, I think it's, what's the scale of that funding from the state?
Um, it was about, I think this year we got fifty-four thousand dollars. So if you take our budget here and then you add on what we get from state aid, we work with a pretty small budget considering how much is happening, right? So the majority of, um, my, uh, presentation is salaries, obviously. And those are, um, go up based on, um, steps. And, um, that's not something that we can, I can change. Um, and then we have the, um, the materials. So repairs, maintenance, buildings and grounds. CW Mars, that's our consortium. We pay a fee to be a member of that consortium. Our library supplies, the cleaning supplies are covered through central maintenance. Our audio visual materials, books and processing, electronic resources, magazines and newspapers. Those are our materials and that's called a materials expenditure. We have a materials expenditure requirement by the state also, which is fifteen percent of our municipal allocation. So we have to, all this money that we get from the city for these things, we have to spend. So we're not spending money, so to speak. We're, they, they keep us on task. We're very much on task. Um, in terms of my request, I did put in a request for four additional part-time people. I was granted one part-time person, uh, which is great. I really appreciate that. Um, we found that when we opened the vacation, sick time, personal time and the volume that we're interacting with on a daily basis, it's really hard when we're down staff. And we don't want to stop services. We don't want to have to close the children's room because there's no one who can be there. We do have, um, a list of substitute library staff in the month of July, August. We covered, we had to cover because of vacations, sick time, all of these things, over two hundred hours with substitutes. We blew through our budget for the per diems. We actually had to transfer funds from state aid to cover how much we went over on our per diem, uh, budget. And that's because we need bodies in the building. It's safety issues. When you have that number of people, you have to make sure that everything is being looked after, plus interacting with the patrons and, and providing the best service possible. Um, yeah, go ahead.
The busiest time of day.
Yeah.
Weekends perhaps? No, week, weekday?
I mean, Saturdays are busy because Saturdays were only open nine-thirty to two. So a lot of families come in. It really depends on which part you're in. So in the mornings, we have a lot of families with children.
So I guess my question is, at the busiest time, what do you have for staff? It's building at a certain time.
Between eight-thirty and five is our largest number of staff members. In the evenings at twelve, twelve and a half.
Twelve and a half on.
Yes. And then in the evenings, we have, uh, five, five people. And that's the minimum we want at the, in the building at all times, just because we need we have someone in the children's room, um, a person on the main desk, a person in, we have the second floor. If you've been there, it's very large. We have one person on each end to monitor what's going on. And the evenings tend to be quieter, although we've seen it really busy also because we have programs happening in the evening. So, uh, we've been very fortunate to have the friends of the library with a very good group. The friends of the library with a very good group of people who will come in and help. Kind of be a person on the ground to make sure that people know where to find the restrooms.
Right, and you have volunteers.
We have volunteers.
You put out a call today for more volunteers.
And we put out a call for more volunteers. Without those, we wouldn't be able to do all the things that we do, so. Uh, we're really lucky to have such a good support group. Um, we call it Team Library, so they, they really come out and, and show, but again, they're volunteers. And so volunteers. If they can't make it, they can't make it, even if they're scheduled to come. It's a volunteer, so you know, that happens sometimes that we. Then have to kind of scramble and, and figure out what's going on. Um, and who's going to cover what. And this, the staff is very flexible, but the staff also, you know. Has, have things to do outside of work, right? Um, so. I think if there are, if there were any concerns that I have with the, the uh, proposed budget, I'm a little concerned. With our part-time wages, I didn't ask for higher because I was hoping I would get more part-time staff. But I worry that I don't have enough. To cover the part-time if I need substitutes and again, that's because. People go on vacation, they get sick. Um, and if we don't have enough people covering, then that gets really hard. Um, the benefit of the substitutes is that they're non-benefited, they get paid hourly. They come in maybe for an hour just to cover lunches so that everyone can have their lunch, um. Or, you know, at, someone gets sick and has to leave, they'll come in if they're available for a few hours. Uh, so that is, that's an area that's really important for us and we have a great. Uh, roster of, of um. Substitute librarians and um, we're very lucky to have them to be able to call on too. Um, another area where I'm concerned is the building repairs and grounds. Uh, we had a puncture in the roof, in the brand new roof, which was eight hundred dollars. And um, I got that resolved because I didn't understand how a new roof would get a puncture. Since there are no trees around and no one's climbing on the roof, but I think it was, you know, a roof. Something that went wrong with the roof, um, so we didn't end up having to cover that expense, it was covered by our construction team. Um, but I had to, I had to fight for that. To get that off our tab because that's a lot of money and that's, you know, if we have five thousand dollars and one is almost a thousand. I hope things don't happen, it's a new building. But you never know, right? So I, and also the grounds, we have no one to take care of the landscaping. And we're looking into possibilities of working with local gardening groups. Um, maybe um, the senior tax work-off program, we're trying to see if there are people out there. Who during those. Summer, spring months want to help with the gardens and see if we can find up something with that, we're looking. There's one thing I can say about libraries, we are very creative in finding solutions that are. Beneficial to everyone. Um, and I think those are really the only two areas where I have any concerns about the budget, otherwise. I'm very pleased with the increases for our materials. As you know, everything goes up every year, our electronic resources go up, books become more expensive. Um. And it's all going, it's all circulating, if, if it weren't moving, I was concerned that it, you know, I wouldn't have put in. Uh, a request for, for more monies to buy the materials, but everything is moving. Um. So I think that's all and I'm ready. We buy it.
Were the handicap doors taken?
Yes, we have two new handicap doors, one on each floor. They just went in last week. They didn't, one didn't work, I got stuck with a patron in the bathroom trying to figure out the door. And they had to come back and, and actually put something in and now it works, it works beautifully, so we have one handicap bathroom.
Hand dryer?
Uh, one hand dryer that is acting up, that is going to be replaced, but otherwise, they're not blowing the.
That's under, still on the contract, that's?
Yes, yes, that is as well, yes, so that's, that's also good. We're working on the signage, that's still in process, but that's coming under the construction project. And hopefully that will be done. I don't know, for the summer is right to say, but. Hopefully by the end of the summer, it's just a long process in terms of design and. What we, what we need, what we don't need, things like that, so we're working through that.
I just have a question and comments, one I've heard from constituents that they would love the library to be even open more hours, especially Saturdays.
Yeah, we can't do it with the current staff, it's not possible. And that, I was going to mention that, we get that request all the time. And because of the requirements of Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, we have to open certain days, certain hours. We would love to consider opening more, but. I can't do it with the current staff that I have, it's just, they're already working their full. Union contract requirements.
You know, you mentioned the need to have the substitute staff, like what? What's a ballpark number that would help you in the budget?
In terms of numbers? I would say ten thousand to be safe, that would be an additional three.
What?
Yeah.
What do you? Generate for income as far as like?
Zero.
Late, late fees, no, late fees?
Everything is white flower because of equity, yeah, yeah.
So there's, nothing comes in to help? Yeah.
Nothing comes in, I mean, we're very fortunate again to have the friends who do fundraising and the foundation is doing fundraising. Um, for, they would like to continue to do fundraising for the library. Um, we get grants, we apply for grants, but those are typically for specific projects. Um, and as I'm sure everyone knows, grants take a lot of time to apply for and. Um, the money comes in and then the money ends, so it's not really sustainable for long-term projects. Uh, for example, we had the mobile hotspot. Program, we still have it, that was grant-funded by the state and. That allowed us to get, you know, loan out the mobile hotspots to um, to our. Community and then that grant money stops, but those hotspots aren't free. It's about a hundred and twenty dollars each per year that comes out of our electronic resources. We budget for that, we, we take care of all of the equipment for all of the patrons, we do not have it under the city budget. So all of the computers, anything that's used by the public, that's an electronic. Material is covered by our budget. And so we use a lot of our state aid money from the state to cover those expenses because this doesn't cover everything. That's very, those are high expenses. Um. In terms of potential income. Maybe we rent the rooms out for, you know. Those people who don't kind of meet the criteria for using the community rooms, a lot of libraries do that.
Typically, it's the bigger rooms.
Yes, a lot of libraries will do that. Um, I mean, we get people asking, could we have a birthday party, could we have, you know? Um, a family gathering and those are all things that don't fit into our meeting room policies, which are. Nonprofits, city departments, yeah, local organizations, um. So that is a possibility moving forward, but that would have to be the trustees who make that determination.
Well, yeah.
I mean, we would all talk about it, but then they would have to vote whether or not as the overseers of the building. And I, we're, we're not quite there yet, we're still, it's still new, we're still figuring out how this all works, um. You know, I think that. So far, we've done a lot considering it's busy, um. And we've had to learn a lot of new things in a much bigger space dealing with. Lots of different people and organizations and things like that, so. Uh, there's a lot more that can be done moving forward, but you know, we have to take kind of little steps. Um, in order to, to get there, but we will. The great thing is the staff are happy and. Really hardworking.
I was gonna say, there's a positive energy, every time I go in there, there's just a positive energy.
It's exciting, it's exciting to see it, you know?
Everybody who's in there is positive.
For the most part, it's good, I mean, every place has its, its moments, but um. It's, you know, it's doing well and I didn't mention that the tween area is almost ready, so that's exciting and. We're hoping that um, they find that to be a good space as well.
I might, not seeing it is uh, you hire a cleaning contractor, right?
That comes out of central maintenance, yeah, yeah. That's out of central maintenance and that person comes three evenings a week. Um. And as do the cleaning supplies that is covered through central maintenance and now that. When the one year is up, I, from what I understand, there's the one-year warranty with the building with the contractor that ends. In July, I think, July, yeah. Then everything hands over in terms of maintenance to DPW.
Central maintenance, is there a plan for that, whether that would be contracted or?
Yeah.
Half frozen, I'm, I'm not quite sure, but I wanted, could I just compliment you in a particular? Over in the middle of this or as this building project was uh, finishing.
I've learned a lot.
All kinds of things and she was just a few months newer than I was.
Yes.
And there were so many things and she did a great job over and over again trying to pull this together and get these things to the finish line, it was not easy, so thank you.
My father also died at the start of it and so that's been a really, really hard. Uh, time to deal with that, my, now both my parents are passed, but that, that was really hard, that was in the end of October, so it's been like. Wah, trying to deal with a lot of things, so. If I made any mistakes, I'm sorry. But um, yeah, I think uh, otherwise, we, it looks good, we are very grateful. To um, have this, we've met our requirement, which is really important for receiving state aid. Uh, it looks like the federal, I'm sorry, the state budget is going to be level funded at least for libraries, so. At least for FY twenty-five, we hope to get the same as what we got this past year. Um, but the forecast doesn't look great going forward, so, right? I think it's across the board, so. Um, ideally, if we can save, we can, state aid can roll over, you don't have to spend it all. Whereas we do have to spend our municipal require uh, amounts. And um, in an ideal world, we have a cushion, but it doesn't always happen, so. Um, but I'm always available anytime you have questions, you know where to find me.
You know, with all the controversy that happened in the last four, five, six years, it's, it's just nice to have a payoff. You know, it's nice to have the positive numbers that you can say, hey, here it is, you know, and people can't debate you, there's no debate. Six hundred people coming in, okay, I can argue with you, you know, so it's just nice, so it's nice to have the payoff for all the stuff you had to go through to get to this place, it's nice. To have that reward.
Well, I hope that the community loves it, I think that there's something for everyone there really and, you know. People, people come in as they want and use it as they want to and um. I think that overall, it's been a really great success and I'm really proud of the staff. For doing that, because it's been, it's a lot and it's, you know, transitions are transitions, right? And they've really risen to the occasion, so I'm happy to be able to work with them. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gather all.
The library card. They were very effective. Got wrecked. Don't think you got a rep, connect from rep, that's okay. Was this one of the ones you left?
Um, I'll think of recreation, I think, when you think of anything fun that happens in this town, think of the recreation department. I've. Had the pleasure of going to some of the basketball things since I've been in. And I just want to tell you that. I've met a few parents, the only reason that children stay in school is because of the active school program. That um, Christie runs, that is, this is. It, it, it's just unbelievable what that department does. Um, from, you know, mini golf, you can think of the things all year round, so. Their um, budget, you see uh, just increases probably mostly at contractual. And there was some increases in purchase of services. Um, you may see that, that was, they, uh, under Christie, I'm not as good at explaining this, Christie has two revolving funds, one for the. After-school program and one for. So, so, um, one that has to do with the pool, so they were a little down on one, so. I think the best way to say it is some things got moved over into the expense line because their revolving fund for the. Uh, river was, they weren't selling as we didn't. Um, see the capacity, but. Uh. More or less the same thing, but they were a little down in expenses and what. Explain that, Angelica, I can see her online if I didn't get that right, quite right, I said, that's what I can do to. Recreation one, but if you have any questions about that, I can see that, my friend Angelica's on.
And why did they take the police detail out that I got from some other fund?
Not, no, it was. Really, they'll still have the police detail for when they needed them. It was just a question of that used to be paid, all of those things had to be paid out, the revolving fund.
Okay.
Which the number of passes, full passes that people bought was less, so she moved expenses into one. Into, under the recreation budget because. Other revolver fund. Uh, took a hit last year because of what's happened in the last two years with, one year there was flooding, then another year it was back here. Yeah, so that was, it's not for. Those things are.
We don't usually have expense lines, once for expense lines, we've done it all.
No, we don't usually have any, but um. When you have one thing in mind is you have to find it somewhere, so she moved it over.
So the, the only other thing I'm seeing is uh, you know, the department's budget has a program supervisor that's not in your budget there. Is that because of the revolving?
Oh.
It's not a higher.
What hours?
Uh, age one sixty-two, the forty-four, nine fifty-two.
Oh, second one.
Oh, I didn't, yes, that was, she asked for that and I said. I'd say no.
Okay.
So everybody didn't get. That, that we should be adding a lot of positions everywhere. There wasn't enough money for that, it, it would have been great to have a few more people in the library, this would be great, she could use that. Um, you know, there, I can't tell you the number of hours a week. That um, Christie and her team worked, well over forty hours, they were down there cleaning, getting the ready ready. So um. But. Those are the tough choices.
Along the way, my, Josh. We'll skip to uh, we'll skip past that, we go GSET.
Hi, John.
On one ninety-one, you guys are on our.
The last thing I read last night.
So uh, I'm happy to talk about changes for the FY twenty-five budget, I did want to start by saying we um. There was a big survey done by Consumer Reports and they talked to a lot of consumers in America and. They asked about the importance of internet to their lives and about eighty percent of the people who responded said that for them. Internet was as important or more important than. So that should tell you something about, yeah. Yeah, that's, um, so we, uh, I've been doing this for about six years, when I started, we had fifteen customers, when I took over GSET. Now about twenty-two hundred. Um, and we do. Work with people who think it's as important as water, it's something that. They expect to have available to them twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We basically say that if there's any kind of outage, we have about thirty seconds. Where we start getting phone calls, two AM on Sunday morning, thirty seconds or, because there is, there are never. Really, the low average we have in the middle of the night, there's still several hundred people online all the time in Deerfield. So we um, our job. So we um, our job is to build out the network as quickly and completely as we can. We have about a hundred miles of fiber that are up on utility poles. There are only seven of us. There used to be more. Um, and we deal directly with the public and we compare our pricing to regular rates. And this past year, this year that we're in now, we will save people about one point nine million dollars over what they would normally be spending. And we think that that money stays local and is good for the local economy. So as for the budget for FY twenty-five, uh some of the biggest, I think the biggest one is you'll notice that our overall budget is lower than it was for last year. That is because this year we are retiring really big one-time expenses that relate all the way back to the the founding of G sets. Uh, for example, last year, our assessment for retirement was a little over two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. This year it's a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars and change. Sorry, I'm not giving you the the complete number. Uh, that's because there was really about a hundred thousand dollars of carry forward from the original setup of G set. Actually, the total carried forward was over a million dollars. And we've been paying it down and paying it down and are finally able to have completed that. And now for the first time, G set retirement reflects the people who are there and not the people who were there seven years ago and we were still paying for them. Uh, we also uh are paying back this year a big chunk of CBBG money between those two things. Um, that was over a quarter of a million dollars. So last year, our appropriation was two million four hundred and thirty-one thousand five seventy-five, I think. And this year it's two million three hundred and twenty-six thousand and change. Um, the biggest increases we have are uh primarily uh a year earlier than we had originally intended to. We are getting back to normal levels of indirects for the city. Um, and really this budget is the the first budget since I've been at G set where there weren't some fairly big operational distortions from sort of holdovers from some of the issues that the first man had with G set. So we will be solidly in the black as an enterprise fund. We're hoping to put about a hundred thousand dollars into retained earnings. Uh, because we, the expenses to land three twenty-six, it gets normed out for uh Department of Revenue. But our actual revenue projections, it's just over two million four hundred and thirty-one thousand. Sorry, I don't remember that number exactly. Um, and we need that. We need to build up retained earnings. We still have um issues that we have to work through, infrastructure issues. There's a lot of make-ready left that we have to do for new areas, but we also have to remediate some make-ready issues that we did inherit. Um, and that's cost money and making sure that we have our grants and building our retained earnings is a way for us to meet those commitments that we have to meet and we can and we will. Um, uh, one thing you might notice in the budget for this year as an increase is this year we have a capital outlay. That's the first time you've seen that in the budget. And that's because what we call CPEs, which is basically the stuff in your house, consumer premise equipment. Early on, before we were able to build our revenue up, we had to fund that through bonds that we worked uh with the city on. Uh, we haven't had a bond with the city for three years. I am sure we will need some at some point in the future. Infrastructure investment is expensive and trucks don't last forever. But um we will now be trying to pay for our basic CPE capital outlays out of operating expenses. We just thought it was important to sort of section it out and show that this is going towards growth and growth in customers as well. We grew about seven percent on the top line last year. Um, we're going to grow same this year. Uh, we are working through just painful process to work with outside people to get the north build going. If you're up north, you will see that there have been new telephone uh utility poles, pardon me, that have been put up. The very first of the um orders for transfer of electricity and transfer of communication from the old poles to the new poles has just started. I'm telling you this is going to happen next week because we don't really control the timeline here. But we are moving through the point where we will get to where we are allowed to go and put our fiber up and reach anywhere between, we say four hundred, it's actually more than that. This is a a number covering additional four hundred houses. It's fairly conservative. It's probably going to be about twice that. Um, which is good for us. We have a lot of people up north who would like to have our service. The other thing we are working towards this year is getting grants so we can address what we call NDUs, which is multiple dwelling units. Um, it is just, I I just actually spent the morning in Springfield at a workshop with uh the Mass Broadband Institute who brought together public housing and ISPs and uh outside uh private companies that do internet work. We do a lot of our own work. But we also do work with other people as well. And it was in some ways really encouraging and in some ways the same old conversation. Everybody knows that we need to try to do more to take old buildings and retrofit them so they can have internet. Well, it's, I've talked to people from Quincy and all over the state. We all have the same problem. We all want to do it. None of us have enough money without grants to do it. It's about thirty times as expensive to rewire an old building because they don't have what are called chases, which are essentially tubes behind the walls that you can run the wiring through. So we have applied for um the digital equity grant. We've applied for what's called the infrastructure gap grant. Uh, we've applied specifically for NDUs for the Weldon. And for uh, we're also working with the interim director of the Greenfield Housing Association or Greenfield Housing Association Buildings. Those set of buildings uh like the Linslow and buildings like that are the ones that have the greatest opportunity to actually get funded by a residential retrofit grants like all grants. There's tons of rules about what you can do, what you can't do. And I I feel pretty good. We've got some really good feedback. Grants haven't been formally uh awarded yet, but we actually think we're going to do pretty well. At least we hope so. Um, and in the meantime, we're continuing uh building out. And our goal is to get to more than ninety percent of the population covered and to try to do so in a way that keeps us in the black and keeps us sustainable and lets us continue to do things. We do a lot with um, uh this past year, we helped connect up the water treatment plant. We worked with the IT department and with PPW to make that happen. We're currently working to try to connect up the police department and sheriff's department. So we, we think we save said seventy-five, it actually works out to about a hundred thousand dollars a year for the city because we're adding more and more services all the time. This is great. That's what we're here for. That's what we want to be doing. So I feel like we've gotten to the point where we put behind us a lot of the inherited issues we have. I feel like this is a budget that actually reflects the people who are there now, what we're doing now. And is the clearest picture of how we can be a sustainable organization going forward. So um, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about budget or whatever.
You're good. It's a lot easier when you're in enterprise.
What's that?
A lot easier when you're in enterprise, self-sustaining.
Yeah, self-sustaining is always good. That's good. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
You too.
All right. Public safety. That's certainly not least.
Sure, definitely.
Are you, when you ask me what time it started, won't be glad I called you five thirty? Chief Strange, you ready?
Sneak a little bit more. I'm gonna make notes. Try to follow.
One oh one. Ready?
Uh, how do you want me to start? With the department budget revolving accounts or uh or uh the simple events? Oh, why don't we go? Go. Right in the, I'm sorry, your regular general budget. Okay. Uh, one oh two. Starts at one oh one, goes to one oh three. Uh, so this year's budget, uh um, we had submitted for a a fully staffed department um uh including the deputy chief um uh and fully staffed uh numbers of firefighters on shift. Um, it's been a process we've been working on for multiple years to restore the shifts back to seven firefighters on a ship. We we work currently with a minimum of five firefighters twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Um, under the mayor's uh guidance and leadership, uh we will, for the first time in a decade, uh restore our numbers to seven firefighters uh on a shift. Uh, two of the positions will come out of the ambulance revenue account, which we'll talk about in a little bit. Uh, due to budget constraints, uh the deputy chief has been put on hold. Um, we are hoping that someday down the road, we'll be able to restore the deputy chief uh for continuity of operations and a little bit of uh administrative, high-end administrative help for me. Uh, uh, but we are in really um good shape when it's who are staffing. So that uh is the budget for staffing. You'll see a small uh, a small decrease over what we've asked for. And from the year before, we have a a stipend that ends in July. We have some other uh contractual things that have changed that a little bit. Uh, and then the other um part was our overtime was reduced. Um, from uh the the ask, the theory behind that is if you put more firefighters on, you should reduce the overtime. I do caution that because the last few years, uh our overtime budget has gone over um what we were budgeted for. Uh, and this year with the increased staffing that we saw last year and changes, uh I'm hoping to come in at or below overtime uh budget, which is a a a very big ask for the fire department over the last, historically over the last five years. So we have made some changes. Um, and then like, like, like somebody earlier said, you know, our goal is to maintain what we have for budget and not go over. And the changes we've made, although it hasn't shown a reflection to overall department budget, we're not going over, which is huge.
I I have a, what, yeah, question. Uh, maybe, what, what's different? I'm assuming it's permanent salary, wages, part-time. What does that mean?
Sure.
I mean, I know what salary is. I know what wages are and that, but.
So we still maintain a very small, what we call a call force. This is a trained firefighters that um come in and assist when we have major uh, major fires and events within the, within the town. Currently, we have staffed two of them. Um, uh, we used to have about a thirty-person call force. Um, but uh retaining volunteer firefighters is very difficult. Um, it's very costly. The average firefighter to get them fully outfitted now runs with a radio, runs just shy of ten thousand dollars, just to outfit them. Um, so it uh, we have seen in the past that that type of investment uh really didn't pay off well for us. And we see it all the time with our neighbors that rely on call firefighters. Some of them are very successful. Some of them are not. Uh, and it comes in waves. Sometimes you have larger numbers, sometimes you don't. So that number reflects what we pay our call force. Um, great question.
Yeah, growing up on Long Island, everybody was uh.
Everybody.
Was a volunteer fire.
Yeah, nationwide volunteer rate is for fire services limited.
Um, can that be covered? Are there uh? Evolving funds, you have?
No, it cannot, because when we talk about the revolving funds, and I'll get into it, it's a specific purpose. And the big revolving account that we have is ambulance services. That money is used to offset the cost of us running ambulances.
Just a quick question. Um, I know the expenses went up just a tiny bit. Um, are you anticipating, you know, increased expenses being in the new firehouse?
It's a great question. So the answer is, uh, I do anticipate some increases, but I think we're going to, the way that we have our budget built right now, I'm hoping to afford most of that. Um, unlike all the other city-owned buildings in town, uh the firefighters uh do a great deal of the custodial and maintenance work. Uh, so uh, so like our buildings, um repair and main uh buildings grounds maintenance, you'll see that there's a fifteen thousand dollar line item in there. We're one of the only departments that still buys our own chemicals, our own cleaning supplies, uh everything that we need to maintain. I have been in touch uh in contact with Marlowe and have asked for if there's a way to squeeze in some custodial help for the public-facing part of our new building, and that's one to two hours a week. Um, the rest of the building, the firefighters.
Right.
Maintain.
I mean, you're not fighting fires. God, that's what's never going to happen, that three, four hours a day. You guys, you guys do your own cooking, the whole bit, right?
So yes, we do. Uh, the the kitchen is is the most important room in the firehouse. Um, and there's a a lot of uh some assumptions that sometimes the public makes about the meals that the firefighters do. So the city pays for no meals. It pays for no food. Um, and and it 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 doesn't pay for a chef. Um, the firefighters, when they start their shift, they talk about what they want for lunch and for dinner. They pull their money. When they go on a call or they go out to drill on the way back, they'll stop by a grocery store, pick up the supplies out of their own pocket. And that's how they make the meals. And so we do make our own meals, but it's at the expense of the departments. So I hope I answered that question.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
I was gonna give you a hard time by adding the fire guy, but because you're foregoing a deputy chief, it seems like. Position wise, when people are saying, well, why did you add a guy? Well, you, but we also didn't have another guy.
So some really, really important.
Didn't have the expensive guy.
Yeah, the the firefighter that we're adding is, what we were hoping was to keep one firefighter out of the ambulance revenue count and add one into the operate. And so it would have seen an increase in our operating budget for firefighters. Under the mayor's leadership, we are taking actually two of the positions out. So the new positions actually coming out of the ambulance revenue, which is earned receipts from ambulance transports.
Sure.
So there's really not an impact to the department budget to add a new, a new firefighter. So yes, we are adding and getting back to staff, but we are taking it out of a different account, including salary and benefits uh and health insurance. And and when you pay for a position out of a revolving account or out of an enterprise fund, you have to pay for the benefits as well. So all of that has been doubled into the ambulance revenue account, which we'll get into when we go over the ambulance account.
Yes, I just have a a kind of staffing structure question here. I noticed there are seven captains.
Yes.
And there are four lieutenants.
Yes.
There's seventeen firefighters on this list?
Yes.
Okay.
Plus two more that will be coming out of the.
What is the kind of the org chart? Because like I, you know, I I hear the word captain and I think, you know, you have a couple of captains and then more lieutenants and then more firefighters.
Yeah, great question.
Is there a contract that says like this is the way to get to pay it? Like what's, what's the story?
No, this is based off of uh best practice in the fire service. And we also um based our command structure of the national. And we also, um, based our command structure of the national incident management system that spells out different roles and I'll, I'll, I'll quickly go over that. So every shift, when we're fully staffed, we'll have seven assigned on the ship. There'll be a captain in charge of the ship and a lieutenant in, uh, that works for the captain. The lieutenant fills in when the captain's out. The lieutenant staffs the second piece if we have, um, you know, enough staffing to, to staff that. In addition to that, we have a captain in charge of fire prevention, which is a huge job. And what his job is code enforcement. Uh, he, uh, oversees fire investigations. He oversees, uh, like I said, code enforcement, new construction. Uh, uh, he, uh, does inspections, uh, very, very tall task. He, uh, and the other two captains, one of them is in charge of logistics. That's the day-to-day stuff. He makes sure the trucks are running, make sure the gear is ordered. He does, like, there's a gamut of stuff that keeps a, a, a big operation like that going. And then the other position is a planning captain. And that planning captain does outside details, scheduling. He does all kinds of scheduling, uh, working with me closely to implement policy, uh, working closely with our vendors, uh, making sure that like our EMS supplies are up to speed. And so they each have very distinct jobs, uh, but that's why there's more captains. Under the plan that we have, one of those captains disappears and gets, um, upgraded to a deputy chief down the road. So that may be a couple of years, but one of those captains will eventually disappear and be replaced with an upgrade.
And, um, what was the name of that organization? Uh, I believe you, I can thank you for the information. I just wanna look up, what was that organization that you said gives the best practices? You said that there was a group that suggests best practices?
Oh, oh, yeah. So, uh, we are governed, uh, as emergency services by being NIMS compliant, uh, which is ICS, Incident Command Structure, uh, system under, um, the federal government. Uh, and that's how we based our, uh, layout of our department.
And I'm sorry, NIMS? What is that? N-I-M-B-S? Is that what it?
Yeah, National Incident Management System.
Okay, thank you much.
Yes. No problem.
Uh. I, I'll be just looking at, um, the third quarter budget report.
Hmm.
Um. So I know this is important stuff, personal fire equipment, right?
Yeah.
Um. Regional appropriation was thirty, thirty thousand. You still have a sub- that substantial mo- voucher of money left over.
Yes.
We haven't got it for yet.
Yes, that's absolutely right. I will tell you my strategy behind that.
Okay, because you, I know you've got one more guy, but you've, you've gone up for this by eleven thousand dollars. I'll be right.
Okay. So first of all, you'll notice that some of my larger operating costs are not Dutch, uh, are not.
Which one is that?
So our operating costs, you'll see that we have, uh, I don't wanna call them discretionary because we have to buy turnout gear, we have to buy equipment, but I don't do it, um, until the last quarter because who knows what's gonna come for upper, for expenses? And we, um, the operating side of the budget, we stay within budget unless it's a, you know, we've had a big emergency or something. But the operating budget, we've had to, we've had to flex some of that out over the years. And it's not until we get to about May where we say, okay, we don't have any emergencies that we had emergency replacement of equipment or, or things like that. Then we go ahead and order the gear in the last quarter. We do that because if I do it all at the beginning of the year and now I need to make an adjustment, I have no room to do. It, it doesn't mean I don't need the gear. It just means that I have to be very careful within the budget and, 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 um, and adjust appropriately. Now, why did it go up? Another great question. Uh, so when I took over as chief, I set a turnout gear, which is a pair of pants and a, and a coat, right? Never mind the whole ensemble, which is helmets, gloves, boots and things like that. Just the turnout gear, when I took over as chief, was about two thousand dollars. It's a little over five thousand dollars, um, and we never increased that line. We tried to get at least ten sets of gear, uh, at a minimum a year, um, because our turnout gear has a shelf life of ten years. Every firefighter by NFPA, which is a national fire protection agency, their, um, standards that they have recommend replacement of turnout gear no more than ten years. So every firefighter has two sets of turnout gear that are replaced every ten years. And so that's a tremendous amount of turnout gear that we have to, we have to rotate. And to keep up on that schedule is very hard. Add in helmets, another five hundred dollars. Add in boots, another four hundred dollars. Add in gloves, another hundred and fifty dollars. Add in radios, eight thousand dollars. Like, it's, it's really hard to keep up, um, with, with the equipment. And in some years, I've had to rob from that to just keep us from being level funded. And we fall behind some years. Um, but we, we have, uh, through our new computer program that we put into place three years ago, we actually track every piece of equipment we have. It's end of life, it's, and, and we project out, this is exactly what we're going to need for next year. And so the number we put in, I don't have the number in front of me, but it's based on amount of projected turnout gear that needs to be replaced, helmets, boots, gloves and everything else that needs to be replaced. And so it's not just an arbitrary number, it's actually what we project for the year to replace turnout gear. Um, I will, I wanted to come back and circle back to the, to the, to the maintenance and, and, and the guys, you know, there's not fires all the time. Uh, when I first got on the department, we were running about eight hundred emergency services calls a year. Um, uh, they're up to, we had our busiest year last year and it's thirty-five hundred runs for emergency services that a fire truck or an ambulance responds to. Um, we are still not the primary ambulance company in town. And so if we took over the duties of that, add another two thousand calls on top of that. Uh, because people think that we go on every medical call. We don't. What we do do is we respond on every high, what we call a high acuity medical call. So when nine, you call nine-one-one, it goes to our dispatch. They say police, fire, ambulance. If you say that you're having a medical, it goes to AMR and they make a determination of what the acuity level is, right? So it's either Alpha, uh, uh, Bravo, Charlie, um, A, B, C, D, Delta and Echo. Echo being somebody is in the process of dying. We go on C, D and E level calls. Those are our high acuity calls. That's your diabetic emergency, that's a difficulty breathing, patient not breathing, seizures, overdose. Um, and then based off of that, um, you may see an, a, a fire engine and an ambulance from us to respond. Most of the medical calls, we send an ambulance, that's our first response ring. If they get there and the primary ambulance company's not available, they have the ability to transport. If it comes in as, you know, a, a cardiac arrest and overdose, somebody not breathing, um, that gets an engine as well, um, because, and, and the analogy that I use is think about, um, you know, like a TV show like ER or some, some medical show where somebody has a cardiac arrest or stops breathing and they pull a code blue and they get like twelve people into, into that little room. They get a respiratory therapist, a cardiologist, nurses and everybody else. Think about that out in the field. Think about now you have a patient that is probably not in the best, you know, not in the best area. You have to physically move them to a place that you can work on and you're doing all the things that they do in the ER in the field. And then you have to put them in an ambulance and transport. And it's very labor-intensive to do that. So people often see, you know, a police officer or two, an ambulance, a fire truck, maybe two ambulances, sometimes maybe even three ambulances because the code requires that a cardiac arrest requires two paramedics on scene. Our company that supplies our ambulance has one medic on each truck. So it may look like a lot of resources, um, but I, I guarantee you, everybody that's involved in trying to save that life is involved, hands-on and, and getting everything that needs to be done for it. So just a quick explanation. Any other questions?
Um, on this admin assistant thing, I'm assuming that this might have been a typo in the budget request. Um, cause I see it, it was like a forty-four thousand dollar request, but, well, put in for eighteen.
Yep.
But that's a point four.
So last year, we finally were able to put a clerical assistant into fire prevention. The clerical work that needs from permitting files, issuing permits, uh, entering, uh, data entry and stuff is immense. And, and we fell way behind with our fire prevention officer, even with the assistance of some of the day staff. Uh, we just, we weren't keeping up with it. There was so much work with that and so much work with, that we are getting for public records requests that it really needs a full-time person. Again, because of budget constraints. Like, I think everybody tries to, tries to put in what they need for the department and, and unfortunately, there's just not enough money to go around. That position had to be that, that.
To fifteen.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Right now, it's a benefited position.
Okay.
Uh, uh, it's a part-time benefited, it is going to a part-time non-benefited.
Okay, so it's just maybe more just a layout of what it's looking like? Cause it almost looked like the ask was for a fifteen-hour a week job at forty-four grand.
Oh, the ask was for a forty-hour.
Forty-hour, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
I'd just like to say that you managed to ask about everything that I made the fire chief particularly happy about.
It's.
Huh?
Right, it is what it is.
Yeah.
Well, we can move to.
One quick.
You know what?
Yeah. Uh, just the incentive pay, what is an incentive to do?
Uh, you're talking under.
It says incentive pay, uh, right under salaries and wages. It's on, uh, one of.
No problem. That's, uh, the, by contract, um, firefighters receives, uh, incentives for, uh, education.
Okay, perfect. So it's contractual.
Yeah, they're all contractual. Clothing allowances, contractual, uh, all, all the things that are listed under the salaries. Um.
That makes sense.
Most of them are, are contractual.
Okay, thank you much. All right. Ambulance forty-seven, all the books are stuck wrong, but.
Oh, sorry, my phone is on silent, it only rings if there's a call. Ambulance services on forty-seven. Uh, before that, on forty-six is fire prevention.
Oh, yeah.
Fire prevention, quite, uh, real simply is the, um, not all fees collected by fire prevention go into the revolving account. Half of them go into the general fund, half of them go into this revolving account. That revolving account money is used to supplement and support fire prevention activities, um, including, uh, overtime. There are, um, some, um, inspections just because of the time nature of it that we have to farm out because my, uh, my firearms, uh, inspector just physically can't keep up with it. Um, and then supplies, you know, that's, you know, um, supplies for, for the office and whatnot, just for fire prevention. And the vehicle, it says thirty-two thousand, that's actually paying for two department vehicles. Uh, all our smaller vehicles come out of this account and we do that by lease. So the, the city, uh, in the last fifteen, twenty years have not paid for a single administrative car, it's always come out of this account. So we rotate the cars that way. Well, vehicles.
Off-topic.
Yeah.
I hear rumors. Rumors, you know, great assault.
Fire trucks don't fit in the fire.
A fire truck's not gonna, one fire truck is not gonna fit in it.
That is not true.
Thank you very much. Everybody listening out there, if you land.
Nearly gave me a heart attack to hear you even tell that rumor for the first time. I'm, I'm telling you what. I am, I'm glad I'm.
Fire truck will fit.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, so that's a, that's, our big truck is our ladder truck. It's forty-seven and a half feet long and I can understand why people would be concerned about that. That, so have we physically done it yet? No, but the engineers have our diagram of the turning radius of our trucks and they built it with, with a little bit of room to spare. Is it tight? Yes. Can we do it? Yes.
Well, is that tight? Does that matter with the car going out? You know, you have to truck out there quickly, I'm worried with that, the.
No, what, did they, so the trucks are gonna have to pull straight out before they make the turn because there's ballers there. But, you know, the ballers could always be removed if they have to be moved, so. But I don't think that that's gonna be the case. The, it, it, yes, our trucks fit fine. I mean, we've actually had trucks that came in, had turned around and had parked there and got out on calls while they're doing tours at the firehouse. Yeah. In the base.
I'm just helping you, man, I'm trying.
No, I appreciate it. It's great for you. I appreciate it, cause I've heard that, I've only chuckled a little bit because I've heard it for, uh, this is about thirtieth time I've heard it. So I don't know where that rumor came from, but yes, they will fit.
I've heard that, so there you go.
Oh, I have it.
Okay.
Yeah, ambulance services, uh, basically from a salary line item and everything that supports salary has been doubled over the ask. Um, uh, so like the firefighter has been doubled, the health insurance, the Medicare, uh, has all been, uh, doubled. Um, every cost that's in here is, um, associated with actual running of the ambulance. We have separated it out from the department budget. Uh, and, and it's done by revenue, um, that is brought in by charging for ambulance trips, which we do about seven hundred, um, transports to the hospital of sick or injured patients. Um, and so part of that is just the business billing services. Uh, we contract a, a company to bill the ambulance, uh, uh, receipts, uh, inner ALS intercepts. If we, we are at a basic level, if it's a high acuity call and the state mandates that you have paramedics come, it's usually South County or Northfield. Uh, if they make it on scene, we have agreements with them and we have to pay them, um, money for that. Uh, medical supply, self-explanatory, training, uh, EMS leased equipment, um, is, you know, our monitors and things like that. That's it. The overtime that's in there covers, uh, their, their biannual recertification, um, and other trainings that are required in addition to if there's ambulance associated with the, with this overtime associated with the ambulance.
Do you know what your balance is in revolving?
The last I checked, we were about six and a quarter.
I know that it's somewhere, if I don't have it right here, I know I have it.
I, I can, I could find it.
Yeah.
I thought it was high sixes. That's why we, I thought it was a good idea to increase the spending limit. Last year's spending limit on this was two hundred and forty-nine thousand, so we increased it to pay for one more firefighter. And, um, I, and I forget what the balance is. And this, this is interesting just from knowing this. Some will close to the general fund, some are available for expenditure and we can lift the spending limits on them. This is, we'll be doing things like that. I don't know what your fire prevention. Uh, it's not, the fire prevention spending limit is forty thousand, like sixty, sixty. So that's always a source, you know? Um, and that with, I just wanna tell you, with that person that was working there with, uh, Captain Smith, that was more revenue was coming in for, uh, with permits. So, so that was kind of a balancing act. So sixty thousand, the other one's like sixty, fifty or something.
My goal is to keep two years' worth of operating costs of the ambulance in that account because you can never, you can never, uh, predict really well what you're going to be doing for transports. Some years it could be high, some you, you know, like two years ago, there were fifty more transports in the war this past fiscal year. So even though our call numbers are bent up, the ambulance, um, transports have been down, so.
You know, I, I learned the opportunity of sharing, uh, workspace with the fire department, the admin guys, especially. It's just rewarding to be able to talk to guys, get a feel of what they do every day, get understanding what's going on out there. So I really appreciate that opportunity to get to know you guys in that context. Because, you know, as a taxpayer, just not paying attention, it's easy to criticize and say, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but when you talk to guys and see them working, understanding what they do, we get to spend. So I've enjoyed having you guys in there.
Thank you.
But we're gonna be happy to get ourselves back.
We're happy to leave.
So I, 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 it, it, it's a great point and I'll just say it really quick. You know, we have, we are called the fire department. It's really not what we do. Firefighting and fire activities is a small portion of what we do. We respond to hazmat calls, we do emergency management. We do a lot of rescue calls, not just medical calls, but actual rescue calls. Where a hiker gets hurt out in the woods, we're the ones that, you know, go get that. If somebody is in the water or falling through the ice or, or things like that. We're the ones that, that, that do that. Um, and so firefighting, the actual firefighting part where we're actually putting fire out is a very, very small percent of our job. Um, but it's the other things that, uh, you know, yes, firefighting is important, but the other things that really make a difference, you know? I, I can't tell you how many lives the guys have saved by being, you know, just on the ambulance. Um, uh, you know, um, where the department that people call when they don't know who to call. Where, you know, elderly folks have a, you know, uh, broke a pipe in their house. We go and mitigate that. If there's a boiler problem, we go and help them mitigate that. Uh, and so we do so much more than just actual firefight. So I just wanted to put that a little fun. Most, a lot of progressive departments are actually changing it from fire department to emergency services. They cover more of a spectrum of what we actually do. So one more?
Yeah, one more budget?
One more.
One more.
Emergency management on page one oh three. Oops. Not on one oh three, it is, uh, one fourteen. We got. So really simply, emergency management, uh, there are two major programs that come out of emergency management. The first one is the reverse nine-one-one system. Um, when there is an emergency, we can put out a message to everybody that is signed up or in the area. Has a cell phone that has their emergency lights, alerts turned on. Um, that's part of it. And then the other, uh, part that, that is big, uh, with emergency management is we do the, um, the city's, uh, drone program. Which is a, uh, co- collaboration between emergency management, fire department, police department. Um, and so, um, like the purchases of services, we pay for the insurance for the, for the drone program. Had a, a highly successful program. Um, we were the, uh, the first one in the state to receive federal funding from municipality to get a program off the ground. And since then, it has grown, um, and it's, uh, um, they've, they have found lost hikers, they've found lost canoeers. They've been able to size up fires quickly. Uh, you know, the, a, a big success story with the drone is when, uh, fortunately that, when the plane crashed. Uh, the drone operator was able to capture the flight path, send the drone up, and within three minutes found the plane. If it wasn't for that, we were about to pull the trigger on putting fifty-some responders on foot. Out in the woods trying to, trying to find the plane. So it's been a huge program. It's been, it's been hugely successful. Um, the drones themselves, very expensive drones, all have been paid for out of grants. The city has not paid for the drones. We pay for the insurance to maintain the drone. That's emergency management. If you ever wanna see it, it's quite the piece of, uh, 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 equipment. It's pretty impressive. The drone. Yeah. It has, uh, you know, um, very good resolution. It's got, uh, thirty times view camera and very, very good infrared, and it can fly in minus, minus zero and winds up to thirty miles an hour, which is unheard of for a drone. And so like when we were out drilling with it, we were at GCC, put it up in the field and you could actually make out who was on the tower at Point C Tower. So.
Creepy.
You know, it's important too, though, that to understand what the capabilities and what we don't use the drone for. And we're very specific. It is not used ever for sit-down. Ever. It's not following people around. It's not flying in people's backyards. It is used and everything is, is, um, is caught on camera. And so we, we, um, we record everything. And so, um, you know, there's multiple layers of accountability that we, we do with that. So privacy should not be an issue when it comes to our drone.
I was just thinking we were talking about monitoring. Point C. Never be able to tag that camera.
Uh, we wouldn't be able to use that for that. I'd say make out. Couldn't see who the actual person was, but you could see that.
We just buzzed them.
Right, that's a quick little dive.
Yeah, it's an amazing piece of equipment and it's, uh, there was a lot of hoops in, uh, federal regulations for us to be able to be successful. But it's one of the premier ones in the state. Very proud of it.
Cool.
Thank you. Thank you. Good work.
Hi, guys.
Let's go.
Then we come by and find them.
Do you wanna start with the main one?
Sure.
Smaller ones?
Like sure, now you're all warmed up. Yeah.
Page to make one.
Uh, ninety-six, ninety-seven, where it starts. I took some notes earlier today. Um, one thing to keep in mind is we have our patrol officer unions in negotiations right now. So we can't really predict where that's gonna end up. So when you're looking at wages, we can't really anticipate yet what that's gonna be, that change. Yeah. Um, so I just made it my own note. Um, permanent salary and wages, you know, it's down slightly. Um, we're actually decided we're gonna eliminate a lieutenant's position in exchange for more boots on the ground. Um, as you see, we're trying to add a position. Uh, we're generally at thirty-four total sworn officers. I'm asking for thirty-five, two of which will be basically exclusively assigned to the downtown business district area, which we're just trying to answer a lot of people's requests. So, um, we get calls regularly from the library. We've started rolling people through the library on a regular basis. With the staffing that we have, we just can't put someone in the business district permanently. We just can't do it. So, um, if we were to add an extra person, we can definitely make that happen. Um, the mayor and I together are, are working on the possibilities of a substation down on Green Street. Um, I think the vast majority would believe it's necessary at this point. If we're going to look towards the development of the downtown, I think we ought to get ahead of that. And those individuals who are, you know, prospective business developers, owners, what have you, driving through Greenfield, I'd rather them see us prior to them deciding whether or not to invest the money. So, uh, if we were to put a substation downtown and have our officer walking regularly downtown. That's gonna help, I think, in the long run. The staff is receiving my promotion seemingly well. Um, they're doing a lot of what I'm asking them to do. Um, graciously, I'm not having to fight for anything that we've been, we've asked so far. Um, but again, we're not gonna fill. We have a great command staff right now and I'm very confident we can get rid of the third lieutenant, which we historically had. And I'd rather convert that, like I said, to a, a patrol officer, cause that's what everybody wants to see. They don't want to see another lieutenant. So the patrol people are gonna see. So that's that move. Um, temporary salary and wages, that went down. Um, the reason, primary reason for that is we don't really have a lot of part-time. So we reduced that line. We have right now really three part-time officers, three, four part-time officers. Um, but there's at least one, maybe two of those are really just in it for detailed money. Um, we're training one right now and we have another sort of floating part-timer. And they take shifts on a premium basis, um, like that. They, they both have full-time careers. And they cover shifts for us when they can. So, uh, the mayor's suggestion to cut that down was, made sense. So I'm not arguing with that one bit. Um, longevity pay, uh, in that line, it went down a little bit. That's primarily probably because seventy percent of our staff was hired after two thousand and nineteen. So we got a lot of young people and they're not getting a longevity yet. Um, I had originally asked for a hundred thousand dollars in our overtime line. Um, this fiscal year it was seventy-five and we're in the red. After discussion with the mayor, we agreed eighty-five would be a happy medium to that. And across, we get there, certainly if we're adding another patrol officer, that could help mitigate overtime. We'd have extra bodies to move around. You know, we, the recent last couple of weeks are sad, not heard of. And the mayor will hear about it soon, what the total is on that, but we're probably around fifteen thousand dollars when we have outside or suspicious staff, so. A lot of resources worked in that. Those are things that we join up with. We have an absolutely amazing emergency response team in Greenfield. I think the firearm police are gelling like never before, in my opinion. So we utilize their resources, they utilize us, and, and we've been working very well together. So we had ground pounders and drones and ATVs out looking for captains in the woods. So, um, you have to pull out all the stops on investigations like that. God forbid that happens again. Hopefully we have a calm going forward, uh, but again, you never know. So, um, I'm inclined to be okay with the, with, it's a, it's a slight increase in the overtime, but it's not completely what I asked for, but we'll make it work. Court overtime, uh, again, we're, we're cutting the fat where it's not needed. Uh, that was cut in half and I think the primary reason for that is our court administrator is doing an absolutely fantastic job of preventing court overtime. So he's able to do a lot of work at the courthouse that redirects cases to either pleas or other alternatives and, uh, that's, that's causing a situation where we don't have to be in court so much, so.
Is that a new position?
No, he's been on for a little while. He's been slowly working at it. Um, he was, he was almost exclusively our court administrator. He's an attorney that, uh, previously worked for the DA's, uh, local DA's office. He then went out on private practice and then we sort of took him on board and we've been utilizing his, you know, his knowledge to help us on our court administrations. It's a lot, a lot of court. In every arrest, every summons, there's court involvement, so. Um, we had recently lost a full-time records clerk. So he actually, in the previous year, his pay went up because he actually assumed her responsibility. So he's got, he's got a lot on his plate. Uh, but again, he's doing a lot to save us a lot. Um, training overtime, we cut that based on what we're seeing in trends. Uh, but I think primarily because we're doing as much as we possibly can in insert, or online training. So a lot of our in-service comes through a system called the Catus, run by the state. It's linked to the, uh, criminal justice training council. And for example, I think I did vast majority all online. So while I'm at work, I can play the videos, do the exercises. The ones we can't do, which we'll talk about in a little bit, are CPR first responders and firearms. So, um, they can figure out a way to do that online. I mean, interesting, although they are starting to develop things that are pretty interesting. So, um, body camera stipend, uh, happy to stand that, that has a significant reduction because the patrol union's obligation is gone as of June thirtieth. The patrol union and the supervisor union contracts are staggered by a year. So we do need a little bit more to get the supervisors through FY twenty-five. At the conclusion of FY twenty-five, there will never be a body cam. So.
Will there still be body cams?
Absolutely. Yep. I, you know, we, I, I'll tell you, the vast majority of officers won't leave the station without one else.
Exactly.
Oh, absolutely. It goes both ways. And, and in the internal affairs component, it has reduced a lot of anxiety across the board. Because play the video, there it is.
Right.
No challenging what you see. Um, I've had instances where the complainant just basically hung up the phone, said, I guess I was lied to because they only heard the audio of what they can. And then they got, so. At the big sad wolves, play anything we got there. The policy is they turn it on anytime there's an interaction with a citizen. And any other time they deem, they might collect some evidence. So, and they're using it. It's, it's an unbelievable tool for us, so. I like them on the IA side, because it, it really has exonerated a lot of complaints, a lot of officers from frivolous complaints that they just simply didn't have.
We will need one of those. On the right along.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's sad. You know, they'll, they'll, people, I'm not, well, some people will accuse us of just about any.
Those are the other side, guys, to help you, uh, supervise, uh, individuals, like, you know, a bit, uh.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, we're using, we're using cameras right now. We have eight. Um, recently explained to the mayor, we have what could potentially be sort of a chronic speeder. And we're dealing with that right now on the cameras for value. Um, to the extent where they're not really gonna argue. They're gonna slow down, so. Um, but again, that stipend will be gone at the conclusion of FY twenty-four. Out of the budget. K nine stipend, um, just mathematically speaking, I had requested, uh, enough stipend to cover three canine officers, cause we have three canine officers. By law, not contract, although it isn't a contract, but by law, canine handlers must be compensated. Uh, and they're compensated pursuant to that law right now. But in conversations with the mayor, we decided there is, well, we have a canine gift account. And if you've seen in the, in the city's Facebook, I asked Matt, uh, we had a post, we graciously accept donations. So right now, there's enough in the account, whereas.
Are you getting donations?
I, I, Judy called me the other day, our, our admin clerk said that something came and I don't think it was flying, but. Take what we can get and it really is, that program is dependent on people offering donations to it, so. Um, we had enough in there, whereas we were able to trim the request of twenty-five, forty-eight down to eleven, five, forty-eight. And we'll take nine thousand from that canine gift account to cover that stuff.
Is the stipend based on hours with a dog or?
No, it's, it's ten percent. A, a canine handler by law must get ten percent of their salary.
Okay.
Or, uh, basically ten percent of their time, which would be an hour a day you'd send them home. They're opting for the pay. Compensation.
I mean, with that. Sorry. Just, uh, regarding the canines, I saw that there is a new bloodhound. I know there's a comfort dog and it says there's three of them. What's the, uh, the third?
So we have Nico, canine Nico, who's a shepherd.
Right.
So canine Nico would be a canine defined as like he's, he's multidisciplinary.
Yeah.
He can search, he can track sense and he can do narcotic detections. The bloodhound is just search. And article search, et cetera. It'll be used, a missing child, we'd use the bloodhound, things of that nature. And Frank is just Frank.
Frank is everybody's friend.
He's just. He, he honestly has proven to be the most valuable dog our agency has right now. Uh, everybody loves Frank.
So is this, this budget is reflecting, you said the reduction of lieutenants, you would have, you have three right now?
We had three until I was promoted to chief. And you're stuck. Uh, so we're not gonna fill this.
So I'm assuming that's where.
Stands.
Yeah, I'm seeing, there's, I don't know, I think this is just a math.
There's a slight increase in the salary overall, but it's because we got rid of that lieutenant's and we added an extra position to, to FY.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I, that's what I'm seeing is makes sense by it and then, but I'm just seeing like the, I think it's just the way it ended up being printed, something the columns weren't adding up to, uh, like the.
Taking into account the cops grant.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. I, I don't know where, where, I was really looking at, but. Oh, I'm not worried about it. I'm seeing where the, where the stuff's going, so I'm sure it was just a, uh, yeah.
I actually wanted to ask about the cops grant as well. I'm going to, so this is a federal grant.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming it's not something we automatically get, just won't be applied for it. So is there a risk, in your opinion, that this is a grant that will disappear and then the city will like, you know, be on the hook for these positions? Uh, the general operating book.
Uh general operating budget or how how competitive is this grant?
It's not a perpetual grant. It's a four-year program.
It's a four-year.
Four-year. So we're in year two. It it's based on when you start funding an employee. So it's not necessarily like fiscal year of twenty-three through twenty-six. It's or twenty-seven. It's when did they start and then we'll cover them for three years, a portion. And it's also a match grant, whereas our match has to increase. While their obligation decreases with each each year until you're down to zero. Year four. We had to sign a contract when we got the grant that we own it at a. So we're slowly tailing. In fact, we're doing, we have to wait until the tomorrow. We tried doing the uh request for pay down. Today of about forty thousand of that, forty-two. Um our our obligation for this past quarter. So there's three officers covered. That was approved in the original grant, three are covered. That has changed because our last officer kept turning into a new name because they leave or go to the state police or they've been making a grant, whatever have you, but. Um we put in, we're going to put in for the pay down request of about forty-two, forty-three. And our obligation this quarter for those three is about thirteen. But next quarter, that's going to change. Maybe more than we're asking, that's for thirty and we pay the twenty.
And a couple of years will change it more.
It has to, it has to keep dropping as we go. So, yeah. Um we're trying to be, you know, reasonable among the budget so that we can make this. So. Um it's been great. Uh Lieutenant Chris Green's here with me today. They have re-advertised the cops grant again. And because we're going to be down some positions, we're going to try for it again. Anytime we can get the funding, we're going to try for it. It is an absolutely miserable grant to apply for. The the websites that you must navigate are miserable to navigate and that's just what it is, but. I mean, as it stands right now, you can't even make a move on that site until it goes through accounting. Accounting makes some certain changes and then the mayor must make some certain changes. We're dealing with that right now. So and it doesn't happen in five minutes. It's a tough thing, so. We're making it, we're making it work, but it's, I'm I'm handling it right now because I had done it in the past because we're just waiting for them to toggle the various users. And their roles.
I was just wondering if having a grant before would help or enter uh the application. Do you think it would help by having? Being awarded back before might help the cause this time because.
I'd probably, although some of them say because you did, you can't get it again. It really depends on the grant. I mean, every grant's different. This one's real. It it really is miserable, but we have all, because I. Applied for it previously. My thoughts on it, we're not going to have to reinvent the wheel on the application. We know that the past application was successful. And I was pleased to say only one other um police department in Massachusetts has granted it. So. And it's it's highly competitive. So whatever we did, it were good and Lieutenant Green will take over that nightmare. Hopefully we can get that. Um so again, we talked about canine stipend. We should be okay there. We'll figure out a way. Um hopefully we do continue to receive donations for that program, so. Uh vehicle repairs and maintenance, I requested twenty. Uh and the reason why I requested more on that was because we have an extremely aging fleet of cruisers. And the repairs on those are getting more and more tricky. Um that was whittled down to eighteen. We're working on a plan. Nothing concrete yet, but working on a plan to try to figure out how to start replacing our old lease cards. So. What a lot of people don't take into mind is when we give the spreadsheets about a cruiser. And they see that it's got fifty-nine thousand miles on it. It's not really, lease cars aren't really, you gotta look at the hours on that car. That thing runs twenty-four seven. Driving just in Greenfield for the most part. A three-year-old lease car is is sort of similar to your car at nine years old. Uh it's got nine years of someone getting in and out. The controls are shot, the seat springs are gone and there's no fabric left and. Um they're used, they're used twenty-four seven. So a three-year-old car. We historically tried to rotate our cruisers out each fourth year. If I were to go for three years, we'd replace that car. We have not, just to put that in perspective, we have not gotten a new car in over four years. Our newest patrol car. Is over four years old. So they are basically consistently and constantly being rotated through the DPW, who is fantastic. Helping us keep these things rolling and or Ford of Greenfield or Ford of Northampton. So. Um the mayor's very much on board. I appreciate it. I'm I'm happy, but. You know, as time goes on, we're really together going to have to come up with a plan by whatever it is that ours.
Okay, quick question on vehicles. Are we obligated to buy an American-made car? So I was looking at like the Ford, you know, I saw the Capitol request these uh cars, patrol vehicles. And they don't sell a sedan. Like Ford has just SUVs at this point or pickup trucks. And, you know. There's obviously the gas mileage concerns. I, you know, there's a budget line item for fifty thousand dollars worth of gasoline, which is, you know. And I try to calculate out how many gallons that was and I won't bore you with it. Um but you know, the more, you know. It's a lot. It's a lot of gasoline and obviously, you know.
This these prices about a hundred gallons.
Right. We had our, you know, energy sustainability department that came on earlier and I'm sure they're working closely with your department as well. Just kind of considering the future of the fleet. And I know there's no good time to adopt something early. But have we considered, you know, vehicles that aren't frankly just giant SUVs, you know? Is that something that?
Yeah, yeah. And in fact, we bought a car last year, a year before for our narcotics detective. It was Toyota. Um we're not opposed to that. Carol Collins has already reached out. Uh we've been in communication about it. They Chevy. It is an American A, but it's a Chevy, um.
Which is fine.
Electric vehicle. The problem right now is, again, we don't have any infrastructure in place for an electric vehicle. Nothing. So there, I mean, how much does each kiosk? We we would probably need twelve charging stations. Because we're twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. This is a thing that's not really taken into account. So at the end of a shift, whereas with. A gas model or even a, you know, a hybrid model. We can theoretically park that car and the other officer comes in, gets in the car and takes off. On a fully electric vehicle, that car is going to have to be parked and it's going to have to go through a charge. So what what wasn't previously considered is where we have a fleet of twelve marked cars right now, we might need a fleet of twenty-four. Now you're talking extreme money. So I'm not saying it's impossible. I did look up the various charging options. Yeah, there's options in there that will charge you up in about forty-five minutes, full charge.
Yeah.
So you're not down a whole ship weight for a kind of charge, but it's just nothing we have in place. I I watched the video and I loved the car. The torque was crazy. I mean, I'd seen, had plenty of room for what we need for patrol function. Um but we're open to all that. We're also sort of bound to the state contract, state bid. So historically, we buy our cars from MHQ. They're in Marlboro, Mass. They're always on the state bid and Ford always seems to be on it. So uh we have to go by that. I haven't seen many of like. Foreign brands on the state contract. It's the only Dodge or Chevy or Ford. Yeah, they are more.
Yeah, there's no more sedans.
No, they they got rid of those. Um the SUVs were so popular that. They used to be on the same exact platform, sedan, the interceptor, they would call it. I think it was like a Ford Taurus that kind of blew up a little bit, got a little bigger and then it was the same car, just on a S-SUV frame and everybody wanted that.
I've seen Mustangs too, right? Like that's another.
Yeah, it's literally when I was in Texas, the cruisers are Mustangs.
Are they all Mustang? That's very appropriate. So I mean, what about a Musk? Do you want a Mustang?
Yeah, I just wanted to, if I, I did ask Carol Collins as soon as she get back, lock on the door is the first thing. Because they desperately need to.
Right, right.
And she waited on stuff just.
Yeah, we're not there.
This year, so. It's something to think about as we go down, but it's down the road, but for now, the two for our final gas.
I have no doubt we're going to spend a lot more time on that.
Yeah, I don't.
Carol's thing. And and like I explained to the mayor, I'm fully committed to to moving in that direction, which is right now, so.
Thanks for sharing your thoughts.
So again, it it is a little concerning, but just be aware, we do have old cars and. The repairs and maintenance is a thing. It can happen. Um repairs and maintenance off, repairs and maintenance office equipment, I requested ten thousand, we've reduced to fifteen hundred. That seems dramatic. But honestly, after discussions with the mayor, it's just, these things are going to be paid for out of different lines. So. Uh that's that's sort of a generalized repairs and maintenance office, but computers, phones, it's all officer. So we'll we'll be able to figure that one out. Uh academy-related items, which if you'll see in there, I think there's two line items for that, one of which is academy tuition. The other one is like physicals and. Some kind of things to get in. So uh we're anticipating. Even if we don't get the extra officer, which I hope you will agree to fund. Um we have the likelihood of, we just lost an officer to the state police, so we're short one. We have a retirement. Almost immediately on the horizon and a third will be retiring. She just sent me her email. Uh yesterday that she will be retiring during FY twenty-five. So there's three alone. An academy alone is about eight thousand dollars a piece. We can't get around that. We we spend as much time as possible trying to recruit trained officers, but that pool is now just. With the the advent of posts, uh that's everybody's first thing is to try to hire an academy-trained officer who's going to save you about eighty thousand dollars. But everybody has done that now. You know, we're, the pool's just gone. So we'll still try. We're going to try to get what we can in terms of trained officers, but I did request three academy tuitions. For the coming year. End with that, the physical and the psychological examinations a piece. Now we're about two thousand dollars. So I had to increase that. It's. There's a chance that we need more than that. Because we could be out. So. We don't set the price, we just have. Communications, we haven't used a large amount of this line, therefore a reduction's made. Building maintenance and supplies. Notes here is there was a significant reduction to that line simply due to a lack of use. We get a lot of help and support from central maintenance. So that's probably why. We're not spending what we would have historically spent. Going off trend, I feel safe that we can have that.
I mean, last year's was kind of a. Some significant increase. It was like six times.
Right, that was. Yeah, he used the years before that. I don't know what that was all about either. I, oh, you know, I think he was, he was anticipating the chief of time was anticipating replacing. So maybe all the computers or something for that. But it didn't end up happening, I know that. And it's and it's no longer on the horizon, so. Meetings and seminars. Uh we, I asked for an increase from two to ten and that's because we are currently in the red at. Where it's at right now. And we're almost, we have almost spent ten thousand here. So. Um again, a lot of things are turning to that in terms of our training. We have signed up for a lot of different programs. We have. Uh officers going with CRO. Team resource officer training, community resource officer stuff, uh the CIT training. Critical incident team training. They go to seminars, meetings, uh the state current on that. And as a result of that, it's expensive. Some of these are in different states and they're going to stay certified. No regards, we have the uh CNP, right Chris?
Yes.
The hostage negotiator team that we have as part of the SRT team. Right now, they have to go Eastern Mass for training, so they stay the night. So meetings and seminars were, they've gone up. For police, that's about it. Um I'll open that up for questions, but again, I think our our primary concern right now is. It goes without saying, we're doing what we can to reestablish our reputation. Hasn't been good. And like I said, I'm getting a lot of buy-in from the staff. We're doing a lot of good things. Uh I'm really looking forward to the concept of maybe putting a substation down town. I've already set up. A sort of a subcommittee at the P E of those who want to join to design it. Let's build something nice. Let's make it something we can be proud of. Uh and we'll staff it. Need you for that, put the people down there. Uh as it stands right now, you've heard numbers tonight. The average shift and feel free to come up, hang out with us and meet us. I'm trying to put a human face on all of us. Is we usually have four people. That's who you have. That's why we can't put officers. The amount of officers we have, there's four people. That's what you get. So um with those, those extra two, my plan is to assign them exclusively on somewhat of a rotational basis. Exclusively to the business. Questions?
Regarding those officers that will potentially be downtown. Are they going to be pedestrians? Are they going to be on bicycles? Are they going to be in a combination of both?
It's going to be a mix. So we have recently created uh Sergeant Jay, uh Jay Witinski's idea of. A community impact unit. That handles everything. That could, that could attach to any possible. The canines are brought under that unit. Um when they go out and deploy and they walk around uh the unhoused. Places along the river, um that group. So there's a variety of individuals attached that. The bike unit, bicycle unit will be part of that. Those individuals. Who are assigned to the downtown will be part of the community impact. It's it's a significantly different philosophy. That we're trying to deploy down there. It's buy an individual a water in the middle of summer if he's looking like he needs it. Um so I'm trying to link up with and Lieutenant Green is helping with me with this is. Um the head of the business association, I'm still trying to get an opportunity to meet with her. We want to discuss the concept of possibly having various vendors sign up. To the point where if we go in and buy an individual hot chocolate or a coffee or breakfast, they can bill us. And we'll, we'll talk more about that.
But I I want to tell you in the day that I asked the chief about, because when we came in, people have been asking, have somebody downtown? I, we've seen a downtown presence. Um he's been walking through, other officers have been walking this through the center of downtown. It's something that really is needed. And after the library, we didn't touch on that, but. She's reached out to me several times because they do have those increased numbers. And as you all know, we have. We have a lot of folks with um the uh psychiatric problems. Many of them. You know, they they could be down visiting in the library. And so she asked for that and it was like the next day, they've been down there doing a walkthrough. Um they also have a lot of. You know, teens, pre-teens, and that presents its own challenges of many of you who have children know. And so um but there's a lot that happens in the downtown and uh it's just. Um I just have to say that everything I I suggested or asked for has happened. Thank you. And it's really on all fronts, fire and police. It's been a very eventful time.
Yeah. Well, I drive down Main Street two or three times a day and I notice a difference, you know. There's a car parked in the corner for a few minutes, you know, and that sort of stuff. And it's just going to take time. It's just going to take time to, you know, for the culture to change, the people to buy in, the people start trusting people, you know, it's just, you know. You're doing a good job, you know, but it's, it just, it takes, it's just uh slow. Well, I love this, you know, but don't, you know, thank you for all you guys are doing. I I I felt a shift in attitude. And it, you know, perception, complaints.
I just, I don't want to lose an opportunity where it would be. Shop owner drives right through. I just, I'd rather. We have our problems downtown. We need to get businesses in here and I think. I mean, we offer a sense of security down there, so we gotta be, gotta do it. So uh we have that commit. Again, the mayor's committed to helping us with this substation, which would be a big deal. We're right there. Put some. Blue lights on a front and say, here we are.
So what would you need in there? I mean, just a co- a computer or two, right?
Just a basic works. What? My vision of that is they can go in there and take notes and and enter a report.
What about tech students?
To do what? Oh, no, I know. Uh well, we have, we have resources that'll save us a lot of money on a redo. Um but my vision is when you walk up to this. Um, but my vision is when you walk up to this, if we can do it, I want a two-way screen right there to, so that there's a direct contact to dispatch. And, you know, I was already criticized about that. Well, so many people are gonna come up and hit the button and run. That's why I wanted a two-way videos. So if they hit the button and they genuinely want an officer, because the plan is the officer's not gonna live in the substation. They're gonna check into the substation. They can charge their bicycles, store their equipment, uh, do reports as needed in there. They can be there so that people can come in and say hi. Um, but primarily I'd like a two-way screen. This is where I want to get IT involved so that someone can come up and call a police officer right from the street. They hit it, they talk directly with the dispatcher. The dispatcher triage is if the officer's not in the building, dispatch can quickly get them back to the substation. So a little bit of tech goes into it. There'll obviously be some cameras to it. I don't think it'd be a lot of work to get it to where we want.
I just want to say, I wouldn't clear anybody's mind on this. We're not thinking about building anything but renting a very small space for very a very economical, very
And there are some
There's a couple of little small spaces. I'm not gonna say it before, but nothing is building with something that would be, no one's in it right now. You know, nobody's there, not building anything, but having a little place where someone could
Sure.
Be sit, sitting down with a couple of actually desks by the fire department might be able to access on the way out. Just looking, I, yeah, there are, they're all, so, so
A store.
A little place to be is all we're
The spot we're looking at it, I can tell you it couldn't be a very big desk.
Right. Yes, that's, yeah.
Picture those like teller now that they have where it like calls up
I like it. Okay, I use those all the time.
Right? So then you get an officer right there.
Something like that. Um, we already use a little bit of that right now in our, sort of our modified dispatch center. I had bought like one of these cheap Amazon two-way communication. And it drives them crazy every time because it's the loudest ring you can hear when you push it. But they can talk to the person in the lobby right across on the other side of the door.
Great.
But I want something obviously a little bit better than that, a little sturdier, that can stay there for a long time. It can deal with the elements, but they can talk directly with our dispatchers as well. So.
I also appreciate, you know, you talk about in your accomplishments about the co-response units. Is, do you see that as something that could expand, continue to expand where you, you've got, you know, social workers and others uh, who can respond to what you're talking about, Mayor, so, you know, folks who might, might not need a police presence, but somebody who has different training so that your guys can be doing, and, and women, other things.
It's expanding at a speed. So we have, they're in the process of onboarding a third for us. We've had two, started with one, went to two now. We're, they're onboarding a third. There is also an intern who is pursuing her master. She's at the tail end. So she's not licensed, but she's been in the station quite a bit. Um, it's, it's definitely a program I see lasting a long, long time. They're busy. I never, we're, police officers don't like change, plain and simple. I would have, there was, everybody was a naysayer. You're not driving a car, I'm lying. And it, and they love the co-responder. Our officers as a rule call for them several times a day. The need is there unfortunately, uh, but they are great and, and they do exactly what you're saying. They are ready free us up to do police specific calls. We may get them there, but then we may leave. We're never gonna bring them into a situation where we're gonna put them in danger. I'll assess, but the program is phenomenal. I never would have predicted it. If you asked me this ten years ago, I would have said no way. But it is absolutely a success and it's growing and growing and growing. Other agencies around us are adding this program to their facilities, to their operations because of the success they're seeing from ours. We're not the first, say that all, but we're the first in this area to do it. And the concept is taking off.
Shift gears over to, uh, dispatch. That's the next one, right?
My notes. So dispatch received one relatively significant change. Uh, there is a massive amount of administrative work that goes into dispatching, understanding dispatch for police, they dispatch for fire. Um, on the off hours are dispatched for DPW. They're handling, uh, transfers to ambulance, et cetera. Um, and with that, we, I'm trying to institute, like you have on the police side, a higher level of quality assurance. We don't have time right now to do that. Uh, so for the longest time, I've been trying to get our dispatch supervisor to be able to sit in an office do much needed paperwork. That'd be applying and managing the nine-one-one grants. And to put that into perspective, last year, uh, this for an incentive grant, we were approved for about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Our training grant was probably close to another twenty. So that person will manage close to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of grants. They'll also do all the scheduling. Um, but also Q A stuff, monitoring going in, listening to phone calls that were taken. Monitoring calls that have been entered and refining what's happening right now. So, um, calls go through and aren't reviewed because it's, it's so quick and it's, it's it's on the fly. We need someone to be able that can take five minutes and actually review what has been completed. So, um, hopefully, if, if the budget works out, we're gonna add a tenth dispatcher. What the tenth dispatcher does is that puts two dispatchers on the desk twenty-four seven. Three sixty-five, it leaves one as a floater, which is a vacation relief for dispatch. The thing to note about dispatch, unlike police operation, fire operation, if a dispatcher is off ship for any reason, any reason, it is overtime. Or must be. Uh, you know, oft- oftentimes an officer calls in sick, we may be able to get through the ship and not fill it with an overtime shift, but they require two people on the desk. And that's all that is assigned ever. There's never a third person assigned. Uh, ten gives us a third person of vacation relief, but that one person is covering vacation for nine other dispatchers. They are often being used, um, and that does not give the dispatch supervisor who is for the most part right now perpetually actually working as a dispatcher anytime to do any sort of administrative obligations. Uh, we, we constantly remain behind with dispatch in that regard. Uh, the police have a lot of their own work they have to do. We did cut down one lieutenant, so we, we have two. Uh, as a lieutenant, I would be in the dispatch management stuff. It, it, there's, there's just too much going on. If, if this is gonna work out right, you need the dispatch supervisor to not have to dispatch every time she's working. So. Um, that did increase that a little bit, although, uh, we cut their overtime because of that. So if we add an additional dispatcher, we're going to cut the, uh, the overtime because arguably the dis, between the dispatch supervisor and the additional dispatcher should alleviate a considerable amount of overtime needs. That, they're also in contract negotiations, which I can't speak to the negotiations, but depending on how that turns out, that could also help us.
Not to be a jerk, but we're paying the supervisor to supervise.
Yeah.
So if the supervisor is not supervising, they're just doing the dispatch job of kind of wasting money right there.
The problem is right now, she's on the desk, but she's also, she, we have what's called, uh, DTS, it's detail tracking. So it is our software for scheduling. She's monitoring all that. She's, you know, she maintains a lot of, I mean, I, I can't even get into the list of stuff she's doing, but she's, she's an anomaly. She won't say no. She'll work around the clock and she won't bill us for it. And she is working and working and working. She, she has a passion for dispatch supervising. And, and she's saved us a lot of money. I mean, she's still getting some overtime, but, uh, nowhere near to the extent of what she puts in. So, uh, as you'll see, her, her salary would increase. But right now, being a union employee, she has the option of taking overtime. So she, she could make a lot of money. She just doesn't do that. So you'll see when the request for her salary line looks high, it's actually less than, far less than what she could get right now.
But yeah, a question about, just kind of picking off, back, backing off of what Counselor One Alaska was asking earlier with the co-response. The dispatchers are the ones responsible for kind of identifying if a call comes in. Whether it should be a co-response, police, fire, whomever. I noticed there's no line item about training in that regard. Do they get training and how do, and so is that just baked into a different salary line?
Dispatcher training is, is almost exclusively covered by the training grant, the nine-one-one training.
That's all that stuff.
We send them to, we're open to send them where they want to go for training because it's a hundred percent recovery from the nine-one-one. And they have started changing towards going to CIT or co-response site trains.
So that's already baked in there. That's not something
Oh, yeah. Yep. Hopefully the, hopefully the funding from nine-one-one doesn't end. It's all volume dependent. So the amount of money we get each, each year is predetermined by the number of calls we get. But we go on their site and they tell us, it tells us what we're getting. So, um, just recently the ninety, we get about ninety-seven, six for the normal operation, the amount of nine-one-one calls we have. Uh, but they just added in last year's grant. Glad I dug a little further because they're actually offering agencies additional money because you have a co-response program. And we're able to get another thirty thousand dollars because we had that co-response program. Sounds great. Great, yeah.
I mean, I didn't know that.
I didn't tell you about that.
I would have found it.
I told you. Go to parking. Park. Key. Think there's much change in the park and we did get rid of one position, so it's just down to a part-time parking enforcement.
That resulted in lost revenue? It's not having the enforcement?
I would say, I think it's more of a, uh, mayor's choice on what we want to do in terms of parking. So, uh, I don't think we're there yet. I think the vision, the overall vision. I mean, I'm wrong. You know, you get as much criticism for charging people to park as you do for getting them tickets. Cause they're, it, it's a tough one. It's our life as police. Every act you take, one person's happy, another one. It's just, so what do you want to do? I think I explained at the counselor, Mike over here, I said, you know, you, you write a ticket and the guy in the house, they're issuing the ticket in front of, is happy that you're there. Person getting it's not. We never win. It just never wins.
Nobody likes to get caught.
I, and I've gone up and down on that philosophically. Should we pay to park? Should we charge? I don't know the answers to that.
Someone with my family got a parking ticket last week and they insisted the kayak was broken. But I just went and paid the ticket online anyways, but we've been there, it was a thing of the thing, but you could say, hey, I, he was fine, but the kayak was broken, you know? They left, so they, they couldn't go back and kind of vacay. It's, it's just easier to pay the parking ticket. But sometimes I wonder, am I getting screwed here because the kayak didn't work? You know, that's what's tough.
Someone just brought that up, if I may, if I can, just asked about that and I and they had a ticket. It's hard to go through the procedure, whatever it is. I haven't actually seen it. But to challenge it, I think a lot of times when people challenge it, they, the customer, you know, makes out okay. But, um, but it's, it doesn't sound like, it's, it didn't sound like it was very simple for somebody to solve that. Wow. So it just, it makes people mad. Cutting out the Saturday parking, lost half of the revenue. So, and it is something that really makes people quite, you know, angry to get tickets, but, um, uh, Main Street, you know, right in the center of town, you have, you have to take it to there. And now Fran, the, who's you know, Fran is the parking, I don't know if Fran's last name is, is an awful place fellow, he goes up by the library now in the morning and, and told me just walk up there early in the morning, is anybody there? Um, and Chief Dodge is talking to uh, two businesses where a lot of people were parking and said, you know, we're gonna be ticketing and now he's up there at nine-thirty and if anybody's parked there, who knows that we're not in the library because the library's not open yet. So.
It was pretty good for one part-time person.
He doesn't break down and that library's got him a lot of damage. But, yeah.
A full time and a half did bring in significant amount of revenue. Again, it's, it's, what, what do we want to do as a city really comes on?
I'd like to mention, as far as parking enforcement, I would honestly like to see more not necessarily in the way of, uh, meters or things like that, but enforcement of the illegal parking. I get like, uh, I don't know, Chapman Street, for example. All the time, especially on the weekend, is all the loading zones that used to be alongside the jewelry store, they're packed full. And when trailers are, truck trailers, like people don't realize that that's why you, you have these clearances of not parking. It becomes a very dangerous situation when you're trying to already go down a very narrow street and you're trying to you see the trailers.
It seems when people are desperate to park, common sense goes up.
Yeah, exactly.
You want to park right here with a car directly on the other side of the street. I don't know, but.
I mean, the meters do like turn people over and it helps with your vibe, it's you, your community.
That's very true. I mean, but I think part of that parking study was like park off-street, it's gonna be free or less money than if you park that way. You pay for the premium park. Pay for premium.
I mean, we have a lot of parking in here.
Right.
A lot of people are listening. We really do, you know?
Yeah. Puts. But everybody butts.
But I know, because you just don't want to walk a little bit.
So charge me bucks an hour.
That's what I'm saying. The parking study showed that you should charge the most parking, right, being right in the middle. That way you're
And that's what Northampton does, you know, if you go to the far-off lots, it's like
In there, you just want the app and pay based on price.
Oh, yeah.
Parking firms just watches the app.
Oh, and, and I'll put like the coins in and then, and then turn on the app so that I can get twice as much time.
They take a picture too, not, because I've gotten caught. And they'll show it to you. You're like, all your tickets, like here's a photograph of you doing the thing.
Oh, yeah.
And it's like, all right. It's like
Ours does that, whether it can do it. And you can scan the inspection sticker to bring up the plates.
Yeah.
It's there. That's a good one. That's Oh, yeah, last, got one more? That's it for me.
For you, right?
Thanks.
Oh, thanks.
Next time.
Building.
Stay home.
But for what? I just gotta say, after sitting through this and being last, there's one thing for certain that we have some absolutely amazing people working in this city.
Oh, wait, wait, no more.
What is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there was an increase in that. We share that with Deerfield, Montague.
Yep.
Um, that's going pretty smooth. Um, in fact, I think we just squared up. All three just squared up. Something coming across my desk. So. That's been going best for us.
It's blessed funded.
Yeah, are we also, Grant, is that that, can I, do you think so? Thank you so much.
Luckily, Judy had her computer. You have your computer? Yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging out through the long haul.
Thanks for all the answers. Glad you showed up on time.
You'll pay.
Yeah, thank, thank you everybody very much.
Oh, you're not, you're not off the hook yet.
What else?
Yeah, yeah, we kind of skipped one.
Good night, everybody. Good night.
I have a few more things.
Run away. We got inspections.
Anybody left? Oh, yes, I said I do.
And he is, uh,
No, he's playing too, but
Yeah, that's right.
Anyway, inspections, yes, um, this would be
Anything to report on that?
Uh, you know, we need to make, runaway just inspections, they're doing, they're ahead of the game on the number of inspections that they're doing. They're, although they, we haven't, we didn't count any staff, but they're down one, they're down a half per um, that we have a half position to fill. I guess it's point six. Um, if you know anybody that wants a job in, in Um, if you know anybody that wants a job in inspecting, we desperately need somebody there. Um, and.
How are they doing with revenue?
They're up.
Good.
They're, 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 they're way up on the revenue. Um, but we need more people to be in that and I, I said to Mark, take, take the night off. He responded, he was going to come. I said, you don't have to. It wasn't a big change and a good thing because he was way at the end of the night. Um, and it, they're part of the. Team that's coming in to try to make us more revenue so that we get the building permits done and then these building permits and then it turns out being. And the increase in assessment that would really.
I didn't mean to skip it earlier. My paperclip was putting parking and animal control together. That's all.
Yeah, and, uh.
Okay, weights and measures.
Weights and measures is under, weights and measures is under marked. Snow as well. I had a big bump last year and then I think.
And others.
That's a new contract, that's why it went up.
I didn't.
Right, last week, or last year.
Yeah, I didn't know why.
Yeah, it hadn't, I, it's kind of like reminded me of vehicle inspections where it was twenty-nine dollars for like forty years and then it finally went up to thirty-five. A few years ago and everybody lost their minds. It was like weights and measures was, it was a new contract, I think it was three, it was like three-year thing. It's mandated. State just finally went up on.
Oh, by the way, I asked Mark just yesterday, I said, can you take a look and see when is the last time that we've run up on the. Uh, price of, of our inspections? So he's taking a good look at that. And I don't know if that has to come before you or not, but I should see if there's anything that we need to, to go up on. Furcog has a certain. So he was going to do a run-by, you know, run through on that to see if this, because it had been a while since we changed anything. Maybe they'll stay the same, but we're going to be in line with what I would do in the municipality. And weights and measures, did you say that had gone up?
That's the one.
Last year, right? Okay.
Twenty twenty. So he was last year.
Yeah, that, it's an assessment. We just, we put our share of whatever. Tell us what the share is, it could be the biggest company. Um.
Now I think that's it.
Well, you got it. Okay, you're. Are you okay with your, your debt and your insurance?
You guys want?
I mean, that.
You guys feel like we need to go over that part of it? Other than what you can look at, I mean, we don't really.
I, I want to tell you one thing about the insurance. This is, there's one thing more that you have to know and then we can go, and then I'll, I'll, I will stay as long as you want.
Add this to the beginning of that.
But, no, but I just want to tell you this on the insurance, okay, on page one-seventy-one. Um. Uh, it, the insurance, it says department. Uh, nine mil, not health, it's under health insurance, nine million, three oh nine, one seven zero. Uh, and then it said mayor, actually, um, mayor. That was the figure that was put in to, to decrease, oh, I'm looking on page one-seventy-one.
Yep.
Decrease, it was put in eight billion, eight hundred forty-eight thousand, four hundred seventy-five. Um. That was an estimate by the finance director, thinking the IAC, the Insurance Advisory Committee was going to vote. On our insurance, uh, because the insurance rates actually increased seventeen percent. Our insurance advisory, those are the head of all the different unions, did not vote for, um. That did not vote for the package that the city was proposing. So it, it, that's going to be a significant increase, four hundred thousand dollars more. It's really going to be more like nine million, three hundred nine. So we may be back with a supplementary, uh, ask to the council at some point because it was the. Our health insurance is, um, it went up seventeen percent. And we brought all the unions together and we said, um, you know, we could. Um. Do this thing where we had the copays go up. And, uh, then your insurance premium would only go up so much, but your copays would be more. It's like if you went into the emergency room, it would be more. And so, um. And that failed, you know, you, everybody had to agree to it, so some agreed and some didn't. And it will be more expensive for all of the employees for their insurance. Um, and it will be a lot more expensive for the city because we pay eighty percent. But they, those, those members, those union members did do a good job representing their, their. The folks that they represented. You know, there was a trade-off going up on the premiums. If you had a couple ER visits, you know, that, that really. And you have, you have family, that would have been a big expense, but I just want you to know that the number that's in the budget is, um. Was a, I, I would say a wishful number and it wasn't what happened. We didn't have, the IAC hadn't voted yet. So, so it's going to be.
So the department number is going to be more what it shows out, so.
And so, and what I.
So we can put it in the budget now?
We don't change it, what you do is we'll see how many people, you know, you have positions that are posted. We don't know how many people that were filled. We'll probably get like through a, halfway through the year and we'll see where we are on the health insurance, but I wanted to. Full disclosure that, um. You know, that was a moving target with this. We didn't know that, those, we were trying to get the insurance advisory, all these union heads were in here, meeting after meeting. In the last month and we would, and, and we didn't know how it would go. I kind of thought it might go the other way, definitely the. Uh, finance director did too, but it, it didn't end up that way. And so now, just like we did this year, which we had never done before. Taking money from stabiliz- more money from stabilizations, et cetera, et cetera. There's a way that you figure out how to do things.
The biggest frustrating part for me is, it's all or nothing. You know, a couple of unions say sure, we'll do this, but the other union said, no, record do that, so everybody. It's all or nothing stuff, it's just kind of tough.
Yeah.
Because then you could kind of compete. You know, you don't want to put people against each other, but, but you could say, hey, well, this union's with us and that sort of stuff, you know, but.
Well, and it is, it was a time point, we had no idea, it was February that they came in. And I said, this could not possibly be, the insurance is going to go up that much. And the union leaders were great, they were in here for these meetings, we had the union people there, but. The time-wise, it just does not work out right for a budget, that's ridiculous. So, um.
So, but is that an increase for three years or one year or?
It's for this year and we just wrote back to them and asked them if they could cap next year's. You know, if they, because this is a, that's a really big hit. Um, you know, for. It's huge. Huge, so.
I may, uh, come play that, we'll look, but I may, I may ask you to, come to the beginning of Monday's meeting. You.
Oh, yeah. No, no.
Go over on how much we need about the debt.
Oh, right, I felt like everybody was tired. I just wanted you to know that on the insurance, so in case.
We're starting at six Monday?
Yes, six.
Yeah, I, I will, I'll be around and do my best to, to answer the, the things. Some, you know, there are things that I don't know. That's to answer. And if there's something that I don't know, I'll find it out.
Alright, well, insurance is brutal. We're going to announce our next meeting is Monday, May sixth at six PM, uh, right here, City Hall Meeting Room, second floor, in Zoom hybrid, unless other ones posted. Uh, or we may add that little second. That's two, but this is mostly, uh, scheduled to do deliberations on this. That, I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Can I do all in favor? Say a wrap, the, the meeting is adjourned at nine-thirty-two PM.